I'm calling to order the regularly scheduled meeting of the Stevens Point Area School District Board of Education. Rule call and verification of quorum, please.
Ms. Baker?
Here.
Mr. Ebel?
Here.
Ms. Faxon?
Here.
Mr. Koshenovsky?
Here.
Ms. Presley?
Ms. Scott?
Here.
Ms. Shibley?
Ms. Scherick?
Here.
Ms. Totten?
Here.
We do have a quorum.
Okay. A special welcome to Alex and Trish. Welcome. It's gonna be exciting.
Thank you.
I'm Angel Faxon. For those who don't know me, I'm sitting in right now as the chair because we are going to assign officers at our next regularly scheduled meeting since we're missing a couple of members tonight. We need to approve the agenda for tonight, and at the moment, we have eight C and D pulled out to be voted on separately. Does anyone else, anything else they'd like? Hold or switched around? Okay. Then I need a motion.
Move for approval as printed without eight C and D. I'm sorry, with C and D pulled out from the agenda.
Can you take a vote?
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Koshenovsky?
Kokonoski's easier for me to understand.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Scherick?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
All right. We're doing the Pledge of Allegiance, and we have students from Roosevelt Elementary School coming in to lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, Ms. Faxon, our vice president is gonna hand you certificates, and if I mess up your name, you just tell me, okay? I don't mean to do it, but I might. Brandon Lecco. Did I get that right? Lecco, okay. Madeline Roschka. Did I get that right, Madeline? Okay. Lucy Hoppenshorner?
Unable to answer.
Not here? All right. Addie? Not here at all? Okay. Lindsey Nightengale? Did I get that right, Lindsey?
Yes.
Okay. Caleb Nightengale. And Connor Scare. Connor? Is it Scare or Scary?
Scary.
Scary. Okay, I apologize. Okay, so if you want to turn those around and hold them like this, there you go, because Mr. Vamous is gonna take a picture, which is gonna show up on our website. Okay, so we're gonna start with Connor and ask you to introduce your parents, Connor.
My mom.
Where is she? And her name is?
Krista.
Krista. Hi, Krista, welcome. Go ahead.
My mom is Ashley.
Caleb.
And where is she?
Back there. Hi, Ashley, welcome. All right, go ahead.
My mom is Julie.
Julie, thank you, welcome.
My mom is Ashley.
She's over there.
My mom and dad.
My mom is Michelle, and my dad is Aaron.
Welcome, both. And I understand that all these students have parents who...
Are employees.
Are employees in the district, so thank you very much for coming, so it's a double recognition. We think that's really great. And let's give it up for our kids from Roosevelt. Go around and meet the board members, starting with Ms. Baker. Okay? You're gonna take your hand. And you get to keep the certificate, how about that? All right, go right ahead. Connor, why don't you go ahead and start?
Good job. Good job. Thank you. Love your smile.
Nice job.
Good job. Good job.
You did an awesome job. Thank you. Thanks for coming, you did a great job.
Nice job.
Thank you.
At this time, we'd like to recognize our monthly community partner, so if Alan and David Martin would step forward, please. Thanks, David. I appreciate it. This is Angel Faxon, our board vice president.
Thank you so much.
Alan, thanks very much. So, David and Alan are from Martin Machining, a firm that was started by Alan and his wife, Debbie, and they've been incredible supporters and contributors to our district, such that we believe they deserve a place on our honor, a wall of honor, which is right outside the boardroom. And before we give you the presentation from Angel, I wanna read a little bit about Martin Machining and specifically about some of the things that they've done for the district. Martin Machining is a locally owned and operated CNC machine shop located just east of Stevens Point. In business since 1987, Martin Machining has grown from a one-man manual shop, machine shop, to a full CNC machining and manufacturing business that employs 20 people. The business has been significant in its growth of customers involved in medical device development and manufacturing. Martin Machining has also had the opportunity to be involved with several research projects conducted in Wisconsin and around the world, which have created valuable information and resources that have grown into new products and process technologies. Martin Machining has employed SPAS students for a little over 20 years, totaling 16 students in that time period. They are huge supporters of the Department of Workforce Development's Youth Apprenticeship Program that started in the state in 1994. Currently, Ryan Bluma, a senior at SPAS, is a youth apprentice working there who is going on to obtain his machinist degree at Midstate Technical College, and Samara Solinsky is working as an office assistant in the Martin Machining office. Alan, Debbie, and their son David are huge advocates for supporting our youth and helping them to understand the options that are available to them upon graduation from SPAS. They're very supportive of the technology and engineering departments at both the junior high schools and SPAS, and currently, David and Alan are working collaboratively with a team from SPAS led by Brigida Altman, our CTE coordinator, who's here with us tonight, on the High School Pupil Workforce Training Program, Wisconsin Fast Forward Grant, in an effort to employ even more youth apprentices across Stevens Point. They serve on our STEM Advisory Board, they play a huge role in the development of updating the machine tool lab at SPAS, which they're currently working on, and they host teacher, counselor, school board, and student groups regularly to show their facility in an effort to create awareness of what manufacturing looks like today in comparison to what it was 30 years ago. Stevens Point is truly blessed to have Alan, Debbie, David, and Martin Machining reside inside our boundaries and care so much for our community and youth. So, congratulations to both of you and Debbie. Angel, present that to you. Thank you.
In recognition of the significant and profound contributions to the district for advancing the education of all its students and for helping us to fulfill our mission, which is to prepare each student to be successful, with deep heartfelt thanks and gratitude.
Thank you. Both very much.
Thank you. Thank you all. And then just one final thing before we give you a chance to speak is, this is a plaque that'll go right outside there on the wall. All right? So, it's your turn.
Well, I don't have anything prepared, but one thing I can say, we have a lot to be thankful for here in Stevens Point, and if we all work together, we could even go a lot further. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
So, we've been in the community a long time, and we're looking forward to being a big part of the community in the future as well.
Here's our future.
So, Dan's gonna take a couple of shots for us. Great. Thank you again very much for all your support. Board members would like to meet you.
Well, I already have. Congratulations.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. Thank you. That's all you do.
Congratulations for all your support. Congratulations.
Good to see you. Thank you for coming. Thank you for everything. Should be at the coffee shop. I've been six.
Here's our future. So, Dan's gonna take a couple of shots for us. Great. Thank you again very much for all your support. Board members would like to meet you.
Well, I already have. Congratulations.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you. That's all you do.
You're lucky for all your support. Congratulations.
Good to see you. Thank you for coming. Thank you for everything. Should be at the coffee shop. I've been six.
We'll see you tomorrow morning. Congratulations.
Thank you.
So, we have some students that we'd like to recognize tonight who participated in the Junior Achievement Business Challenge. So, if Lucas Chan, Joey Pascavis, I believe that's correct, and Tony Jacobs, if you're here, would please come up? Are they here? They're not. So, we'll present them with certificates. They qualified to advance to the Wisconsin Junior Achievement Business Challenge on May the 1st, which is coming up, and they competed against 60 Portage and Wood County High School students who were CEOs for the day and were very proud of their accomplishments. And they took third place in the competition. They each will receive a $250 scholarship to Midstate, and their business ed teacher is Brent Gastamski, and they were mentored by Katie Johnson, who is a business leader, and Katie sent a message saying, "I was truly excited to have mentored with this team from SPAS. It was rewarding to be reminded of the drive and knowledge that our students have today. These gentlemen were a lot of fun and worked awesome as a team and team leaders together." So, congratulations to Lucas, Joey, and Tony, as well as Brent. So, we'll provide those certificates to them at SPAS. Would like to recognize now our members of the FCC LA here in Stevens Point is Kiara Jameros and Brooke Schiff with us. Here we go. In uniform. That's great. Welcome.
Hi.
How are you?
Good.
Good. Welcome. Ms. Faxon, our board vice president. Ashley St. Alvin-Clark, who's also in uniform. Janessa Galarsky. And Tanya Kransky. Janessa, welcome.
Thank you.
Tanya, welcome.
Thank you.
All right. So, we're gonna say a few things about you to embarrass you a little bit, but that's a good thing. Okay? So, it's because you're wearing your medals. That's wonderful. This year, 19 members of the Stevens Point Area Family Career and Community Leaders of America, or FCC LA, attended the 2014 State Leadership Conference in the Wisconsin Dells on Monday, March 31st through Wednesday, April the 2nd. This year's leadership conference was titled Lights, Camera, Leadership, and was focused on training FCC LA members to be proactive leaders, strong community members, and team players. It also included sessions on building and organizing a successful chapter. Five members scored in the top two of their events and were invited to compete at the National FCC LA Leadership Conference in San Antonio, Texas, this coming July. Those members included these young ladies right here, Kiara and Brooke in Entrepreneurship, Ashley in Teach and Train, Janessa in Career Investigation, and Tanya in National Program in Action. These students are advised by Brett Lesniak, FCA teacher at SPAS. Is Brett here with us tonight? There you are, Brett. Welcome, and congratulations. So, we have some certificates for you, ladies. Do you have them already? Oh, wonderful. So, you can go ahead and pass them out.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, so, did you come with your parents?
Yeah.
All right, let's start over here, and you can introduce them.
My parents are Wendy and Kransky.
Welcome.
My parents are Julie and Mike Jameros.
Welcome.
My mom, stepdad, and dad are here. Brett Lesniak and Dave Lesniak and Mike Schiff.
Welcome, all three.
My mom, Kim St. Alvin-Clark, is here.
Kim?
My mom, Terry Galarsky, is here.
Terry, welcome. All right. Congratulations to all of you. Let's give it up for our FCC. Hold them around. Mr. Vamous is gonna take a photo. Great. Is there anything that you want to say about the competition that we should know? Is there a team leader? Or, I mean, you're all leaders.
I am the president of the FCC LA.
All right, great.
We, the girls, all put in, well, girls and boys, all put in a lot of effort into making these possible, but they wouldn't be possible without Ms. Lesniak. I know most of us have spent countless hours sitting down with her going over our binders. Most of us, I think all of our projects had binders that are at least like 20 to 30 pages, so it's a lot of work. Took a lot of extra hours to put together.
Wonderful. Well, good luck in San Antonio.
Thank you.
Break home the gold. Yeah, there you go. So, our board members would like to meet you. All right, start with this speaker.
Did they get the photo? Yes, they did. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. 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 Thanks for all the hard work. Really proud of you guys. Good luck. Good luck. Really proud of you guys. You did, I know. It's a lot of work. Good luck. Thanks so much for all you did.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So, this year, every month, we recognize a staff member from someplace in the district, and we try to make it a surprise because it's a student who selects that staff member. So, what we'd like to do is invite Mark Air, a math teacher and athletic director at Ben Franklin, up, along with Jacob Rice, who nominated Mr. Air for this recognition. Come on in, Jacob. So, is this a surprise, Mark, or is this...
No, I'm sorry, it's not.
It's not? Well, then, feel relaxed, Jacob, okay? So, Jacob's gonna read or tell us why he chose Mr. Air to be recognized as our staff member sort of of the month.
All right. Coach Air's had a big impact on me ever since I met him. I have known him since the eighth grade when he was the head coach of my football team. From the first day of practice, Coach Air brought a greater intensity and enthusiasm to his work than I'd ever seen. I knew that he truly had a love for the game. Coach Air pushed me harder than any coach I've ever had, and I feel that that work ethic has stuck with me ever since. In addition to coaching me in football, I also had Mr. Air as a math teacher my eighth grade year, and he took the exact same intensity from the football field and brought it into the classroom. He worked as hard as to get everything he could out of each and every student he had, and encouraged his students to do things they had never done before, like his homework quizzes, which he did to make sure that his students were both finishing and checking their homework. Along with making his students work hard, he also seems to find a way to have some fun too, whether it's making up nicknames for everyone or making jokes about different math terms, like changing the name of the distributive property into the Mr. Air property because it makes it look good. Somehow, Coach Air got stuck with me one more time because now he has me on his baseball team, and I'm looking forward to finishing off the season with him.
Congratulations, Mark. I'm gonna have Jacob give this to Mark. It's a certificate awarded to Mark Air, Ben Franklin, Athletic Director and Math Teacher. The student staff recognition is presented to you for the positive and lasting impact you have made on Jacob and his fellow students. We are a family of teachers and learners. You have taught them and many others the essentials of how to learn, the values, how to live a good life, and how they might pay it forward. With heartfelt thanks and gratitude, April 28th, 2014. Jacob, I'm gonna let you present that to Mr. Air.
Thank you very much, Mark. Thanks again.
All right. I'm gonna say a few words here.
It's very kind that Jacob did this. I knew it was coming because it happened a few months ago because of some of the different commitments I had. Was unable to go ahead and do it that month, so I didn't know that it was coming, but I am very pleased to have Jacob as an eighth grade football player, as a student, and also right now, he's playing ninth grade baseball for me. And he's just, he's a young man that I know, I hope my own boys that I have, they're young, they have a lot of the same qualities that he has. And also, we are very blessed, as you've heard some of the other people say, with Martin Machining, everything else, we are in a great community. And so, Jacob is one of a lot of students that I have. They're just very, very proud of the work ethic and everything that they have. And so, I'm very blessed to go ahead and be able to work with him and a lot of great students here in our community.
Thank you, Mark. Jacob, are any of the folks here tonight?
Yeah, my mom's back there, Sandy Rice.
Mrs. Rice, thank you very much for coming. We appreciate it. You should be very, very proud of Jacob. Wonderful. So, let's take a picture, and you get to hold up that certificate if you want. Wonderful. Thanks again, Mark. Congratulations. The board members would like to meet both of you. So, you guys go ahead.
Nice job. Very nice. Great job, job. Still going strong, aren't you?
Peter and Connie Kazmerik donated a lift system valued at $3,276 for the Special Education Department. We're particularly grateful to Peter and Connie. The Boston School Forest received donations for the support of school forest programs from the following: Bannock Elementary PTO $400, MacDill Elementary PTO $250, and the Plover Whiting PTO $200. Plover Whiting Elementary also received a $100 donation from Theta Care, selected by Constance Lambert. And Welling Woodworks donated wood to the Fernandez Center woodworking workshop, and we're particularly grateful for those contributions to support our students. I'm also just want to announce that Native American Awareness Week is April 28th through May 3rd. That is this week. UWSP has a list of events that they're hosting. You can go to their website and find those. And finally, at each board member's places is a flyer with some pictures, kind of announcing in a way the Kennedy Little Free Library and the Little Free Libraries that are going up around the district. And it's a wonderful contribution to reading for the entire community, not just for kids. And a great deal of thanks to Beth Molsky, who was one of the people who initiated that and is leading the charge on Little Free Libraries. So, congratulations to Beth, and thank you for the contributions.
At this time, we're onto public comments, and I'll just bring up something that I was gonna bring up at the organizational meeting, but we'll try it tonight. I thought maybe in general, if you speak once, you can speak for five minutes. If you speak more than once, you can speak for three, and we'll see how that works. So, in the order you have signed up, we have Albert.
I passed.
Okay. Reed?
So, I signed up twice. Does that mean I speak five the first time and three the second, or three each time?
What do you need, Reed?
As much time as I need, but it probably won't be that long, but...
If you need five and three, that's okay. My intent was three and three.
Well, I'll take five on the first one and three on the second one. I had, last week, Tuesday, I, the first time, had the opportunity to sit in on a, that super committee, and I didn't get there till about 6:30. I thought that's what time it started, but it apparently started at 5:30. But I was extremely disappointed in what I saw for the half hour that I was there. And it's my recollection that there's 50 people or something on the super committee, and there weren't any more than 20 at that, at that meeting the night I was there. And it was being run by Greg Nien, and there were only about two members that really were doing all the talking. One was Andrew Halverson, who, I don't know what he knows about the school system, and then Dick Oakley had done a lot of talking. But what it appeared, what I was catching was this Jackson School, they were, that night, they were talking about taking, getting rid of Fernandez Center and moving the alternative school to Jackson School slash Tech Center. Okay? So, my concern is that these people are once again being programmed by the staff to be looking at Jackson School for a tech center. And I thought that this board, at least quite a few of you on the board, were not interested in making a tech center, though I know Mr. Winiger wants to make a tech center, so. And his staff is just playing right into his game, has got Andrew Halverson, and apparently they voted. That's what they're gonna do. And what really gets me is when the alternative school makes their claim, they've gotta be by themselves, but apparently now, it's okay for the alternative school to go in with the tech center. And then I would imagine that we were gonna get the charter school effort. They're gonna wanna go in there, okay? You know, it never makes any sense here, is whatever's convenient, then all of a sudden, it's okay to mix and match. So, I just wanted to, you know, and I'm thinking, and looking here, and they're talking about how much money they're gonna save, et cetera, and apparently, what I gather is they're gonna do a great realignment of moving the ninth grade to SPAS, which I agree, what's four-year high school. But I don't know what they're gonna be doing with the other grades, and I would think that it makes the most sense to maybe go to a middle school, junior high, and what they're talking about is why they're moving the alternative school or the Fernandez Centers, they're gonna get rid of that building. Well, all you really would do is save $300,000, because that's what it runs, operates that. Now, to me, I think you ought to be looking at going to a middle school, junior high, and maybe using Jackson School as a sixth grade, totally sixth grade, and take the sixth grade out of sixth, seventh, and eighth, just have one or, you know, maybe Ben Franklin, you know, being a seventh and eighth grade for the entire school district, having one sixth grade, leave the sixth grade at Kennedy, and if you got your folder, they talk about something like that, okay? And then perhaps you could close PJ Jacobs. Now, closing PJ Jacobs would save you $3 to $4 million. Now, that's some serious money here. But I don't believe that this super committee is even thinking about that. They're being, they're being led by, it's not a committee running themselves, it's a committee being led by the staff. So, that's not really a committee. So, they're gonna come here making these recommendations, and, you know, I want, I think you people should be aware, and I know you were there, that when you're, you know, when you make your decision based on your recommendation, to take that with a grain of salt and say, you know, perhaps this really wasn't independently done, it wasn't done by many people, just even on the committee, there's only a few of them talking. My guess is the few like the mayor and that are talking with the administration privately, and that's where they come up with this kind of stuff. So, from that perspective, I'm disappointed in how this is going, and I just wanted you to be aware, and I think more of you should attend the meetings to see just how they're gonna, how they're coming to the conclusions they're gonna come up with, so then you can, you can say, well, are these valid or not? Thank you.
Okay. TJ, you're next. And you have five minutes.
Yeah, don't start my timer. Thanks. Angel, while she's passing that out, can I just tell Reed the exact hours for the solidated task force?
Absolutely. Please do.
It's 5 to 7. So, I don't want you to come at 5:30 tomorrow and be late. It's 5 to 7, and it'll be at the Bliss Center tomorrow. Okay? Or anybody's welcome, so.
Okay. TJ Faro-Kolzak, 3288 Felts Avenue, Stevens Point, Wisconsin. I'm here tonight speaking as an individual. I am, however, concerned and kind of fearful of the repercussions by addressing you this
Okay, TJ, you're next. And you have five minutes.
Yeah, don't start my time. Angel, while she's passing that out, can I just tell Reed the exact hours for the Consolidated Task Force?
Please do.
It's five to seven. So I don't want you to come at 5:30 tomorrow and be late. It's five to seven, and it'll be at the Bliss Center tomorrow. Okay. Or anybody's welcome, so.
Okay. TJ Farrow-Kolzak, 3288 Phelps Avenue, Stevens Point, Wisconsin. I'm here tonight speaking as an individual. I am, however, concerned and kind of fearful of the repercussions by addressing you this afternoon, this evening. I'm speaking, I've spoken up before on policies and handbook discrepancies, and have been directly and indirectly affected, but here goes. I'm here before you this evening to address my concerns with the District Employee Process Handbook 3.1, which you have, which you've each been given a copy of. As you can see, it was last updated on August 12, 2013. I was in attendance at the board meeting in which former HR Director Keith Williams brought the current language back to this board in hopes of updating it. In his rationale to the board, he stated that the reason it was being brought back was to make it more clear and to reflect the process that was being followed. The board then passed its proposed changes, which are the ones I've given you. At that time, I thought, good. This clears up a lot of questions and confusion. It makes the process easier to understand. Unfortunately, that's not the case today. If you look at the latest job posting, which I passed, which was passed out to you, you will see that regular education elementary teacher positions were posted in our schools, lounges, wherever, as approximately 10 FTE openings ranging between grade levels one through six. It also goes on to state that the applicant should state their grade level preference in their cover letter, and WECAN. If you are unaware, WECAN is an outside agency that school districts can subscribe to to find job applicants, and applicants can apply for jobs within your district. Yet, the first time those openings were posted internally, all staff was sent an email that stated the specific grade level openings at the specific buildings, which is what the policy, I would think you could answer. It also stated that individuals would need to contact HR at their desired grade level and building. So the first time they were posted didn't follow what the handbook said, and the second time they were posted doesn't follow what the handbook says. So, the process was sorted out, sorted, I'm sorry, so the process was sort of followed for the first time with an email, and that was sent out to all staff. Why the change for the next round of postings? For instance, one of my colleagues did get one of the first jobs that was posted in that email. But how does everyone know that now her current spot will be available to take for next year? The answer? The employees don't know. We don't know. Then, if you look back at the handbook policy in the section that I've highlighted, it states clearly, "Internal applicants," and it says, "In individuals already employed by the district," and parentheses, "can apply for openings indicating their interest via a cover letter," parentheses, "hard copy or email," and parentheses, "to the hiring," would be principal in my case, "and copying the HR director." Okay, I ask you, if I wanted to apply for a job within this district, what would my cover letter or email say? Who would I send it to? There are nine elementary schools, each with openings one through six. When I sought an answer to those questions from a few administrators, I was given the answer that I would not have to go through WECAN, but that I would have to email HR regarding my grade level preference. Again, I ask you, what school? What grade? Who do I contact? As an individual who wishes to apply for an elementary position, due to the fact that I was involuntary transferred last fall, how would I know where to start? Is it now the expectation that I would contact each and every elementary principal to inquire about their grade level openings? And furthermore, will they have time to talk with me and perhaps 10, 20, 30 other employees who have those same questions? Again, I sought out the answer from administration, and was told it would be an ongoing process, and it was too much to tell us which schools and where the postings were after each round of transfers. As I stated earlier, I thought this process had been cleared up in this new handbook language, yet it appears as if the process is going to change due to the fact that several postings would need to be done several times. Ask yourself, oh, I'm sorry. Ask yourself, is that not how it's done in the private sector? They post their openings, they tell you what it is, you apply for them. Someone changes, they apply for the next one. Wouldn't that be the most beneficial to our employees? Wouldn't it offer everyone an equal opportunity to apply for the openings that we have? I sit through these board meetings and continually hear how district employee morale is an issue, and I think to myself, why? Well, in this situation, I want you to think, why on earth are we not letting our employees know where openings are? Why aren't we not giving them the specifics? Why wouldn't we, as a district, want to offer our current employees the opportunity to make a change to a different school or a different grade level? Why aren't we following our own handbook language? I'm expected to read it and sign off that I'm following it. As an employee, I have to keep on top of all those handbook changes, and I'm expected to hear to them. Then why doesn't the district, or not the board, have to do the same? I would hope that this district would welcome the opportunities to allow its employees to challenge themselves with a new grade level position or a new building assignment. In the field of education, we're always striving to grow and change, and I find it alarming that this may not be this district's philosophy. Thank you.
Okay, we have a Spash Student Senate Report, please.
The Spash Music Department invites the board to Showtime this Thursday, Friday, and Saturday at 7:00 PM, and Sunday at 2:00 PM. Junior prom was a success this past weekend, and will bring in the money for their senior class gift next year. The Soon Senate and PJ Jacobs Student Council attended the WAC State Leadership Conference this weekend in Madison. Students had time to collaborate with student leaders from across the state and are excited to bring new ideas to our district. We had students participate in a scrapbook and banner competition, both placed well within our state. During our regional meeting, Rachel Lai was re-elected Region Two President, and Peyton Ware was elected Secretary. Overall, it was a great experience, and we're excited to bring back our new ideas. Thank you.
Thank you, Asher. No one has signed up for Board Comments and a WASB legislative update?
No, no report tonight.
Superintendent's report. Oh, sorry, before you start, Reed, you signed up for this? You signed up to speak for this 73? Yes? Okay, you're up.
Well, I was under impression there were some other things we could talk about, but the 73 is the Life Skill Center update, and if you look at your little handout, what they have in there is basically, you know, what happened apparently at the last Plan Commission meeting, what the school district was told that was going to be necessary before the city would accept it. Basically, you know, that they had to include additional architectural elements that better complement the site and the facility, and that these plans should be, once again, reviewed by the Plan Commission and moved by the Common Council, you know, but it's pretty simple to me, how you would build it. You'd build it to look like Spash, the entire building, because you can see it from the entire building, and it isn't that hard to figure out how to do it. You look at this building, it's an exact replica of Ben Franklin, so that isn't, isn't that difficult to accomplish, though that's not, that's not the only thing that this board asked for. You asked that they come back and tell you what all these were going to cost you, and then you were going to, then at that time reconsider whether you're still going to go ahead with this project, but I don't see anything in here about what the cost of all of these changes will be. I did notice, they've got some colorful picture, that they're moving the parking, on the angle parking, because I told you, I mentioned once before, that this wasn't well thought out, that if you parked the cars straight, the way they had this thing planned, the cars coming around, that's the dropout zone, we'd be taking the back end of the cars out because it'd be sticking out in the road. You could have, you could have told, seen that from the last drawing, and now they're bringing them in on angles, so they are losing parking, and they claimed they weren't going to lose parking. And I believe you need better plans, and you need, you want to know exactly what it's going to look like, so this building looks like something that's to be proud of, sticking right out in front of Spash. You're going to want to know what it's going to cost you, and now that you are, most likely going to be grade realigning, moving ninth grade, so you'll be doing a lot, you know, construction up at Spash to accommodate ninth grade coming up there. You know, it's time, maybe you also, you should also consider, you know, that this location may not be the best, and incorporating it into a project that you will be doing at Spash when you do the other remodeling. So, you know, that's, you know, I've been watching this one for, how long's this thing been going on? A year and a half, because you never, ever did get straight answers and et cetera. So that's where you're at here, and I would hope that, when he makes his update, that people start talking about this thing. This is, this is a big deal, and you want it, if you are going to spend this money, you know, the best thing would be, why don't you take the funds, the Medicaid funds that they have, and pay back where they originally got them? They got them from local funds. Wouldn't that be the ideal thing? Take the money that you've got burning a hole in his pocket here, the $400,000, and pay back the local funds. That's what I would do with it. So I think you should update the new board members on how the board has received that money. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The only three things I want to just briefly mention is that in the report was a paragraph and a document announcing a partnership with Klesinski Clinic. I had some conversations today with several medical providers in the community, including the Klesinski Clinic, and also talked with our legal counsel. At this time, based on those conversations, we're holding off on announcing this partnership to our employees and executing it, and we're going to research this a little bit more carefully, and Klesinski Clinic is perfectly fine with that. We talked with them, as I said, this afternoon, and we'll bring this back to the board if and when we decide to move forward with the partnership. Want to just remind the community that Point and Common Learning Symposium, the third of three events this year, is taking place tomorrow from 7:00 to 8:30 at the Century Theater. Daniel Coyle, a noted journalist and New York Times bestselling author, will present The Talent Code, Explain Your Talents, I included a flyer. It's going to be a fairly large event. We're very proud to have Dan Coyle here in the community, addressing us on this very important topic, which essentially delves into how it is that students and others can actually explore their talents and develop talents in areas that they never thought possible. The final announcement is simply one that the Annual District Employee Retirement Theater is a week from Tuesday, on Tuesday, May 6, at the Holiday Inn. The event begins at 6:15, and congratulations to all of our retirees who've served the district and its students. I'd be glad to entertain any questions from the board regarding the other parts of the report.
I just have, I guess, first, a comment on the elementary instructional leader option. Thank you for going through that. I'm going to professionally disagree with the whole situation, but I would like to see if I can get any of the educational leaders to give me their pros and cons, their thoughts on the, on how it's working and what's going on with it. I'm hoping that they will contact me, so I'm not bothering their busy schedule on that. The other thing is E, the board member contact information on the district website. Do we have our phone numbers, has that been corrected and put our phone numbers back on there?
I don't know, Kim, we can certainly find out, we'll correct it.
Okay, because I believe, and it can be a board vote, hopefully, that we have our phone numbers on there, that we would like anybody to be able to get ahold of us. So, I mean, it's always been on there before, and I know if everybody has, I mean, everybody else has an issue about it, that's fine, but...
Go ahead to put those in there.
I mean, sometimes I wish people wouldn't call me, but they do, and I'll take their questions and comments. The other thing I have a question on is the Life Skill Center. Again, what is the cost? I want to know a cost. I would like to, and I'm going to, at the end of the meeting, is bring this forward so we can put this on the agenda, and we can re-talk, revisit this whole thing again.
Can I, can I just give you some information, Kim, about that?
Go ahead.
Are you asking me a question about it or not?
Well, if you have it, great. If you don't, I would like to see it, you know, have a, have a whole agenda to time to discuss it in depth of where we are, where we are at with that.
Just, what I want to do is just clarify what had actually occurred over the last few months. At the January 13 meeting, Lisa asked that there, I had made a statement that there are going to be modifications that need to be made to the Life Skill Center, and she asked, will we be told about what those modifications are? And my response was, we can do that once the City Council approves it, or I can send the report that the Plan Commission approved, and Lisa indicated that would be good. So I did send what the Plan Commission had approved, but I'd indicated very clearly in January that we couldn't do anything until the City Council approved it, and the reason is, is that we won't know the cost of the project until the bids come in. At that point, the board makes a decision about whether or not it wants to go forward, if it does not, or if it does, with what bidder. So we will not have a project cost until those bids come in. At the February 10 meeting, the same conversation occurred, and I'd indicated that we continue to work with the city about facade questions, and Lisa asked, is there any idea of the cost for the changes to the facade? Will this come back to the board with additional costs? And I said, we are working on this, and you then asked, can we have it come back with all the changes and updates? And Lisa mentioned that the board would like to be apprised, and I indicated that the facade plan needs to go back to the Planning Commission and the City Council, which it did. A little bit later, and not, actually, just a few minutes after that, I indicated that if the amount were over what the board approved, that would come back to the board, and if it were not, we would still apprise the board of how we resolve this with the city. Lisa indicated that it was a substantial amount of money. Is the board going to approve the increase before it goes back to the city? Tom then indicated, we can't move forward with the project until we resolve this first and have the funds. We're in the process of putting together a plan to keep costs down. And then, right after that, I indicated the direct answer is, the board approved a dollar amount for the Life Skill Center. If it goes beyond that, we would certainly bring it back. The look of the building has to go back to the Planning Commission and City Council for their approval, so the board will be apprised of all of those things as the process moves along. But as Tom indicated, we can't do anything until we resolve the facade issue. The facade issue has been resolved, and the process is, as I outlined in the report. And Tom indicated, we are not moving forward with any bids or construction until we resolve this, because that affects the overall cost of the project. So, we are bringing this back to the board when we have actual costs that are bid on by qualified bidders for the project. Until then, we won't know what it costs. At that point, the board makes its decision. So that's the information that I have.
Okay, and I just want to make sure that I'm clear on that. Before this project moves any further, other than putting the bids together, before ground is broke, it will be in front of the board again?
Yes, by our own policy, and it has to go through the other steps that I indicated, it has to go to the Public Utility Works Department, so on, because now it's passed both the city and the Plan Commission, so it has to go to them, and then it comes back to us to prepare for bids. We go out with those bids, we evaluate them, and then bring them back to the board and say, here's what the project is going to cost, here are the bidders who have bid on it, here's how much they have bid on the project, and it's ultimately the board's decision.
Okay, because when I was at the Consolidated Task Force, it did come up in as a question from one of the members there, that are they, the board, going to delay the Life Skill Center if we are going to make additions on to Spash? They looked at me for, I don't want to say direction, but to answer that question, and I couldn't answer it, because of course, I'm only one, and so I wanted to bring that to the board, that they are worried, not worried about it, questioning it, that let's not move forward this until we know what our task force is going to do. So that's what I'm just clarifying, that we're not moving forward, we're not breaking ground with this, until we get all of our ducks in a row in that little swampy palm that we're going to be building on and moving forward.
Correct, and let me just give you a, two scenarios, two possible scenarios. One really is highly unlikely, but the other one is probably the one that'll happen. It is possible that the bids and all of that work could be done, and the board would have that information prior to the Consolidated Task Force bringing forward its recommendations. If that were to occur, you would then have the project bids for the Life Skill Center in your hand while you were considering the Consolidated Task Force recommendations. That's unlikely, because the Consolidated Task Force is most likely going to finish in early June, I'm told, and the bids and so on would take a longer period of time than that. So the other scenario is that you'll get the Consolidated Task Force recommendations, and you could say, we're going to hold on these, the board can, and we're going to wait until the Life Skill Center comes forward with its cost, and then make a decision. So it's really, in either case, strictly up to the board, but there isn't a blade of grass that's going to be cut or turned until the board decides whether or not it wants to approve one of those bids.
Super, I mean, I like when my cart is behind my horse and it's pulling it along gently. So thank you for that update. The other thing is that this Kalinsky thing, which I know you said we're going to put off right now, but there's no dates on here. So if something else comes forward on this, I would like to see, like, when people signed it, when it was offered, and, you know...
Sure, yeah, and that's absolutely correct, Lisa, we'll be glad to put the dates on there. I just want to inform the board just very quickly. Several months ago, the clinic came forward and talked with Tom and asked if they could do this. We went back and forth a little bit on how the wording should be, and it was literally as simple as that. But again, today, Tom's on vacation this week, so I didn't have an opportunity to talk to him today about it, but as a result of several conversations, including one with legal counsel, we're just pulling that back for now, and are going to research it a little bit more.
And you've been receiving the emails from the community members also?
I received one email.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Lisa? Oh, sorry. Patricia, go ahead.
I, this is sort of, sort of helping me with my learning curve with regards to the first section, the elementary educational, I'm sorry, elementary instructional leaders options. Can you explain, and perhaps I should have just called you this afternoon and asked you about this privately, but can you just explain what the instructional leaders are? Is there one at each school? Just give me a little bit more information about...
Yeah, I'll give you a thumbnail, Tricia, and then Bill Carlson, who's our Director of Elementary Ed, can go a little bit more in depth. Bill, why don't you come on up while I'm doing that? We have two different sorts of positions, one at the elementary level, one at the secondary level. We have transformed the one at the elementary level significantly. In last month, I think it was, the board approved a change in the stipend for that position, because it has turned into a leadership position. At the secondary level, at junior high, and senior high, we have department chairs, and they're, they're really more coordinator positions than leadership positions, but those we've been working on, and Keel Aronson, our Director of Secondary Ed, is working with the principals and the department chairs on transforming those in another year or so. Instructional leader positions at the elementary, there are several of them in each building, and they are full-time teachers, they have no release time, but they have a stipend that is indicative of the kinds of leadership that they do perform, and they are those positions by what's called units, and they used to be called unit leaders, but now we've changed that title to instructional leaders, all right? So I'm going to let Bill explain a little bit more about those.
Sure. Typically, we usually have four instructional leaders at each building because of our unit structure. We usually have a K2, excuse me, a K1, possibly, 2, 3, 4, 5, and then 5, 6. So there's usually four instructional leaders, each, each one of those in charge of one of those units in their, in their, in their building. And as Attila indicated, that we've taken on a much more, we've had them take on a much more of a leadership role, particularly with response to intervention and PBIS, differentiated instruction, some of these new initiatives, trying to get those into the building and understood and implemented. At the building level, we realized pretty quickly that building principals alone could not do that. They needed to have leaders within the building who they worked with day in and day out to help implement those. So they, when they meet weekly with their units and talk about students and issues students are having, either academic or behavioral, develop implementation plans for dealing with those, and then progress monitor those students, and they lead all of those efforts within their unit at the building level. They also do some other things with, they're kind of the sounding board for the principal, and also kind of a leadership team within the building, so any school improvement plans that they make are developed by that team of people, so they're really core and central to all of the leadership, leadership activities that we're implementing in every building. So, most buildings have four, Kennedy has three, although some buildings have actually divided those up where they have two people sharing it, so those numbers will fluctuate a little bit.
And those are the people that got, is it a $6,000 stipend?
Correct, correct.
$6,000 is a...
Since about 1993, they've been getting between a $15... Since about 1993, they've been getting between a $1,500 and $1,700 stipend a year, and after the job grew, we just determined that it's not enough for the instructional role that they've taken on. And so we proposed, and it was approved by the school board, that we would bump that up to $6,000 for the stipend for the school year, starting next school year.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Lisa, do you have questions?
Yes, I do. Okay, on D, we talked about the salary matrix, and I was wondering if you could explain how that came to be. I know the Board had to approve the starting levels at the Bachelors and Masters and the PhD, but who came up with this matrix? How did it come about? And who is it that determines, like, the ones that are hard to fill versus not?
So, just going back in time a little bit, I believe in, I indicated here that it was first used in the 12, 13 school year. And after the handbook had been developed and the salary ranges had been established for the Bachelors, Masters, and either PhD or MA 60, administratively, Keith and the HR Department developed this as a way of differentiating between fairly typical positions versus those that are hard to fill. And those hard-to-fill positions are fairly true statewide as well as nationally, and so administratively, we developed this. And again, it was employed for the first time in the 12, 13 school year. The Board did receive this earlier this year as part of a, part of a presentation in January, although it was not part of the packet, but it was distributed during the Board meeting. So, it was HR that developed it and employed it, as I said, in the 12, 13 school year. But it is, as I understand it, it is, it is probably, it's not going to be used next year because of the Teacher Pay Plan work group, that compensation report's going to be coming forward, and the Board's then going to make a different decision.
Okay, thank you. The other thing, I also noticed, which I emailed you about, the Board member contact information in the past, our addresses, our phone numbers, all that stuff was available to the public, and it's no longer there, so I also agree that it needs to be there. The...
It, pardon me?
We just got it updated, and so it'll be on the website this week.
Awesome. Thank you. The Life Skill Center update, I agree with actually both Reed and Kim, and I'm glad to hear that we will have the numbers, because I too have heard from the Super Task Force, some participants, that they want, you know, they're concerned about spending money on a project and then possibly renovating SPASH and where things should have been moved around or whatever, so I'm very glad to hear that. The Klosinski Clinic partnership, I'm actually quite concerned about this in that the Board wasn't notified about it ahead of time, and I've had quite a few communications, and the letter implies that it was Board sanctioned from, from my view and from the community members that contacted us. And so, I'm just wondering if we should implement sort of a procedure or policy in regards to when we do a partnership like this, or any other partnership, that the Board be made aware of it ahead of time and sanction it officially so that, you know, we can make sure all the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted, instead of finding out at this point that, you know, we should have done more of our due diligence before we move further on that. So, just wanted to express my concern on that.
If I could just reply about the partnership. The Board has approved every partnership that I can recollect in my three and a half years here, with the exception of this one. And this one is a partner, we threw, we put the word partnership there, because they, the Klosinski Clinic came to us. We didn't go looking for this. The Klosinski Clinic could have offered this to our employees without any participation on our part. But they came to us and asked us to publicize that to our employees, and so we felt that we needed to have something in writing, and administratively, we felt very comfortable doing that. So this is not the same kind of partnership that the Board has approved in the past, which was a very official memorandum of understanding, or memorandum of agreement, or partnership such as the one that we have with other entities in the district. So, when a vendor steps forward and offers a discount to employees, we really, we really don't need to have any kind of formal written statement or agreement. But as I said, we're going to pull this back and take a look at it a little bit further in terms of some of the, some of the legal issues that may be involved. But I do appreciate your comments, Lisa, about possibly bringing all of these forward to the Board. Would be perfectly comfortable doing that.
Anyone else? Anyone?
If I could just make two kind of follow-up announcements about the information in here?
Yes.
If I could do that. I just want to respond to one of our speakers about the Consolidated Task Force. I want to assure the Board, first of all, that the Administration has had absolutely no private conversations with any member of that task force, with the exception of Tom Owens, who has kept me updated on its progress every week. And so there have been no conversations. In fact, I was the one that gave the task force its charge. I did not attend any, I've not attended any of the meetings except one. I think it was two Tuesdays ago, when I stepped in for about 20 to 30 minutes and sat in the far back on a table and was just listening to the conversation. So I want the Board to be absolutely clear about that. And secondly, the Consolidated Task Force is not operating under any kind of staff recommendations involving that. The charge was very clear. It was to take those four committees and task force reports, to look at them and to develop recommendations from them for the Board, along with costs that might be associated moving forward. So that process has not involved me or any other member of the Administration, except those that sit on it, and there's been no back-channel conversations with anyone, whether inside the district or outside the district, on anybody's part, except that Tom Owens updates me weekly on what occurs at those meetings.
May I say something?
Sure.
For the one task force meeting that I did attend, it was stated that they were told to keep Jackson off of the plate as an option, because it was going to be used for other things. So there is some miscommunication going out there. It was clarified that no option was supposed to be taken off the table, so there is some misinformation out there.
Well, if it was clarified, though, at the meeting, Lisa, then there isn't miscommunication.
This is coming up in our agenda stuff to talk about, right? Because really, we shouldn't, this is not on his report.
Well, regarding the Consolidated Task Force...
Right, but that's not in your, really, in your report. It's coming in down the road, isn't it? And can we discuss it back?
I simply was responding to a speaker...
You're correct.
I was simply responding and clarifying to a speaker.
Yep, but I just wanted to stop her, because there's stuff I want to say, but I'm going to do it when we have the...
Mark, correct.
Okay, so, sorry about that.
Hey, I'm going to say one other thing, because I did go have this conversation, so this is just to my fellow Board members, in terms of our information being published on the website. I spoke to the District Attorney's Office at length. It was a concern of mine, since I have children, that that information is published, and we are not required to have it published. It is an option, and we can choose that, but under no circumstances, particularly if you have small children, do you need to have your address or your phone number published on a public directory. So, it's optional.
The other thing I wanted to respond to is, one of the speakers indicated an issue with the Human Resources posting of positions. As the Acting HR Director, I'll be following up on that first thing tomorrow, actually, and making sure that the handbook and what's posted on the web are consistent.
Thank you. Anyone else on the Superintendent's Report? Okay, let's move on to the consent agenda. What we are looking for is a motion to approve the consent agenda, letters A and B as presented.
So move.
I'll second that.
Okay, seconded by Trish. A roll call vote, please. Oh, I'm sorry, Kim.
I don't know if it makes a difference, but maybe 30 years down the road or whatever like that, but on the Thursday, April 17th, the workshop, on number two, my name, I'm assuming that's my name, but it's spelt wrong. Okay, again, everybody does it, I just want to make sure that people knew 30 years down the road I was there.
Lisa?
And I'm just curious why we don't have the minutes from the last meeting to approve.
I have not completed those yet.
Okay.
I apologize. It'll be on the next agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Ms. Beckson?
Yes.
Mr. Kokenowski?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Scherr?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Okay. Next, we have letter C, which is 2014, 2015 teacher contracts. This was pulled off separately, but this is an information-only item, so I don't actually need a motion, but...
No, but Amy, I am going to recuse myself and move away from the table for C and D, please.
So is it okay, then, if we put them together? Everyone's all right with that?
Yeah.
C and D? Okay, so I need a motion to approve letters C and D on the consent agenda.
So move.
Second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. And do we have any discussion? Kim?
Well, I do, I just, we should make a note that we have the revised copy at our desk.
Yep.
And also, just a quick question about this teacher's contract, and I know that's annually, do we also have them sign the employee handbook annually also? And is that done at a different time, at the same time their contract?
That's a good question, Kim. I don't know the answer to that, but I'll find out, and then I'll let the Board know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can I?
Yes, Trish.
Um, sorry.
Yes, you can, because you're on this table now.
Anytime.
I can talk, thanks. Is this contract identical to, like, last year's contract? Have any changes been made?
The changes are the ones that you see that are highlighted in red line. Those are the only changes.
Okay, all right, very good. Thank you.
Sure.
Although they're not technically red line, but yeah. Right. Red line, bolded.
I do have, just for Board information, there's been some interest on the part of some Board members to know why people are resigning and leaving the district. So I just want to indicate three, that there are three resignations there, and without identifying the individuals, out of respect for them. One of the teachers is a former retiree who was hired back for one year, and that individual is resigning the position. A second one is leaving to go to the Rochelle School District, and the third one is moving out of state. So those are the three reasons on this one, that people have resigned.
Thank you. Yep.
We should just thank them for their service.
Exactly.
I'm not saying that you left it out on purpose, but we always forget to do that, to thank all of our teachers, not only the ones that are resigning and retiring, but for everybody that works in our district. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. And for those who are, for the alteration of contracts, those who are stepping up and taking on more time, thank you for that as well, and for every minute you spend with our kids. We have a motion and a second to approve C and D. Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Kokenowski?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Scherr?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel? Yes.
Ms. Beckson?
Yes.
Very substantial.
Okay, and please make a note that Ms. Totten is returning to the table. Thank you. All right, we are now on to Business Services, Ownership of Property in Junction City.
About a year or two ago, we had someone who was pressed interest in purchasing the mentioned or identified parcel in Junction City. It's a one-acre parcel that sits on the corner of Victory Road and Stashik Road, I believe. And we thought that that individual was going to purchase it, but it turned out that they didn't want to do that, so it remained unpurchased. Recently, as mentioned in my memo, and Tom's memo, that Jeff Presley had emailed us, he had had a conversation with the County Register of Deeds about it, and so we looked into it. And as indicated, Tom and I drove out to that parcel. It does, it sits immediately adjacent to a farm that is being farmed, and that one acre is also being farmed by those individuals. And as you can, as you can see in the memo, in the 73 years that has passed, the property on the county GIS system lists the properties belonging to the district, but we don't have a deed. There isn't a deed to it. So, what we thought best is to bring this matter to the Board and have the Board decide what it would like to do. There isn't anyone who has expressed interest in purchasing it. I don't really know the value of it. I could go back and find that, but we're looking for some direction.
Okay, so let's open up the conversation. Chris?
The 88, do we own the other 79?
No, that's owned by a private individual.
It is owned by...
Yeah, I believe what occurred historically is that when land was parceled out, or first maybe divided, that there were one-acre plots all over the place specifically for schools. And because at the time, there weren't necessarily school districts, they designated one acre, and they would have a schoolhouse on that. And the reason that I know that is because my father-in-law and his family owns many, many farms down in Beaver Dam in the Dodge County area, and the same thing is true. So there is one acre there that says in the paperwork that it's meant for school use. And since that became part of our district, it is owned by the district, but it doesn't have a deed. So it would take, I think, some, obviously, attorneys to turn that around and work with the individual who's farming the land. Don't even know if the individual knows that that's, you know, owned or designated to the school.
How can they be farming land if it's not theirs?
I don't know that they know that it is there. It is ours.
I'm just, I mean, it's, I think I'm going to farm here.
Because it's been owned for 72 years.
If it's okay. So what are the pros and cons? I mean, do we want that one acre? Do we need that one acre? Do we want to make money on it? Is it good? Is it bad?
You know, and Tom and I have talked about this at some, like, you know, when you drive out there, while it is in Junction City, there's, I mean, it's not anywhere close to Kennedy. Secondly, I don't know what we would do with a one-acre plot, other than create another Boston School Forest, but, you know, maybe an agricultural, you know, center or something. I don't know. The cost of looking into this is going to be, I wouldn't say prohibitive, but it's going to be expensive, because it's going to involve legal counsel and people with deeds and all that kind of thing. I can't even give you a figure. We've tried to get a handle on that, but we can't until the work actually begins. So, you know, the option of the Board is to essentially give it or sell it to that individual farming it if they so choose, or to tell the person not to farm it, but then we'd have to go and settle the deed situation. I mean, it's, I don't know that the Board wants to do that, but it can.
One follow-up. What's you farming?
I have no idea. It's a groundless till, but I didn't look to see what kind of crops it was.
Probably corner hay out in that area.
Yeah, just much, yes. I don't want it.
Can we sell it without a deed?
I don't know the answer to that either. So we could find that out, we just wanted to know what direction you wanted us to go in. It's the district's property, and you're the decision-makers about that.
Yeah, for the cost, I think it's going to take us to figure it out. I don't think it's worth it. I mean, I'm from that area, and I'm familiar with that area, and people in the past have known, because it was kind of always a joke about that one acre. And it's come up here a handful of times since I've been on the Board about that one acre. But again, we have different parcels, you know, in Portage County or whatever in our district. But if the cost is going to outweigh the benefit, I'm going to say, leave it as is. Leave them farm it, because it'll probably take more gas to go around that one acre than to... Again, I don't know the farmers at all personally. No benefit here or nothing like that, maybe a couple of cobs of corn, but anyway, that would be my thought, is if it's going to cost us thousands and thousands of dollars going to cost us thousands and thousands of dollars to figure it out.
I could certainly find out relatively easily, I think, if whether or not we have the right to sell it. We didn't even start down that road, but I could find that out without incurring any costs.
Could, could we give the land to the landowner on the condition that the township would be able to use it? Because from what I understand, the township is looking to do some work on that property.
My understanding was, as I think I, we indicated in the memo, that there is construction planned for that intersection. My understanding and our understanding is, is that there isn't any construction planned for that one-acre plot, but there's always an easement, and that intersection is being widened with that easement availability. We could, we could ask a land attorney or ask someone who specializes in that, what, you know, what it might take, they must have run into this in the past, to, to figure out the cost of that, and we could come back to the board with that information.
May I make a suggestion? You know, being new to the board, I'm not sure what I can offer to do and what I can't, but Cindy Wasinski is the Register of Deeds. Her office is right below mine in the county building. I guess I'd suggest that Tom Owens or yourself go and see her. She probably, you know, just make an appointment with her. She probably can, can spell out the steps pretty easily and pretty clearly as to what needs to be done. Of course, she's not going to do it for us, but, but I think that she'd be able to give us, give the, the school board some good direction.
Tom has been in touch with her, Trish.
I did see.
Yeah. So we could ask Tom to certainly do that.
Is that what the board would like to happen? Or just kind of go in with a consensus here? Have Tom come back with more information? Go ahead, Alex.
Once we find out that we do indeed own this property, we're paying back taxes on it then? Or have we been keeping up with that?
Well, that's a good question. I don't know. We'll have to find that out.
I don't think so either. Yeah, I don't think...
I don't think school pays taxes.
I don't think we do either, but I don't want to say that definitively, because I don't know. So we'll, but we'll find that out as well.
Was there actually a one-room schoolhouse on that property that we know of?
I'm sorry, Alex?
Was there a one-room schoolhouse on that property? Or maybe looking at an issue that there might be a wealth someplace that needs to be dealt with?
Okay.
From my understanding, because I think my great-great aunt went to a school on that building, that's how I know about it. But again, years and years ago. So there's nothing that sits on there now.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments on this? Okay. So to summarize, you'll come back with some information. I wrote down any questions anyone had as well. Either at the next meeting or soon thereafter. All right. Great. Thank you. Resolution designating district depositories. This is an action item, and this is an annual item that we deal with.
Correct. Right. It's simply indicating that between the time that the new board, the board election took place and the time that the board elects new officers, we have to continue operating. We continue to have to do business. This comes before the board every year, and it just means that that stamp needs to go on checks and that kind of thing. I asked the question, does it, is, I mean, can we do that recognizing that... Oh, I'm sorry. This is about direct depositories. I'm skipping ahead. I apologize. Yes, this is an annual resolution indicating that the institutions that we've listed there are qualified as public depositories under Wisconsin statutes. So it is an action item, and it's done annually.
Can I make a motion to approve the resolution as attached?
Please do. Any discussion? Kim?
I, I just want to kind of give a little history. I don't have a lot of history in me, but the reason they use a lot of the banks is to kind of spread our wealth. That's kind of a joke, but, you know, they, the PTOs use them, and it's what's convenient for them. So I believe, if anybody wants to contradict me on that, it's just that they use multiple ones, so it's convenient for the schools and other entities, so...
Any other discussion? All right. Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Scher?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Paxton?
Yes.
Mr. Okunowski?
Yes.
Motion carries eight, seven to zero.
Okay. And now the signature resolution.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that. This is intended to be able to conduct business between the time period that I indicated. Again, it's an annual thing that's done, and it just allows us to conduct business. So May the 12th is when the new officers will be elected. At that point, we'll have a new signature block that will be developed.
Chris?
And I'll move to approve the, to continue the signature facsimile use resolution and the new signature facsimile resolution.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have questions. I'm sorry. I always have questions.
Good. Absolutely.
Can, can you explain, is this for writing checks? And what, what's the gamut of things that the signatures are used on?
Bill Rudolph, probably would be best to advise you on that one. Trish, Triville is our finance manager, so...
This is the signature plate for signing checks.
Okay.
And we have a facsimile, where we can't obviously get a new one until we actually, actually elect the new members, the new, the president, clerk, and treasurer. So we won't have it exactly in two weeks. It'll be sometime after that, because they will have to sign a form that will be sent to Skyward, that will develop one that we, that will be imprinted on any check we issue.
Okay.
So that's, it's only used for the checks that are issued.
Okay. That's it? That's all it's used for?
Right.
I...
That I'm aware of.
That's correct.
May I follow up?
Absolutely.
I understand that a signature is going to be needed for graduation diplomas.
We're getting to that topic later in the agenda, Trish.
Okay. All right. Very good. Thank you.
No, good question. That's why it's on the agenda.
Yeah.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. This is to approve the signature for checks only. Roll call vote.
Ms. Scher?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Paxton?
Yes.
Mr. Okunowski?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Okay. Seven to zero. We're on to elementary staffing requests, and this is Bill Carlson.
On the memo that we prepared for tonight, we're asking you for two positions. The first one being a reading position, who'll be a reading specialist working in our elementary schools. This is really not an additional FTE. It's really a funding issue. We've received our preliminary Title I estimates for the money we'll be receiving next, next year, and we're anticipating about a little over $8,000 less in our allocation, is what they're telling us. And we also have about $55,000 less in our carryover funds. We carry over some Title I funds from year to year to year. So we'll be down approximately about $63,000 in Title I funding next year compared to this year. That's pretty, about a position, a teaching position, actually not quite enough by the time you do salary and benefits. So we're really looking just to kind of transfer the, the cost of that onto the district, because we don't want to decrease our, our reading staff. We want to hold it as it is for this year. So what we're really asking you to do is fund one position of the total reading staff that we'll have at the elementary level next year. So that's the first request. So we're looking for 1.0 FTE there. The second position we're looking for is really driven by student numbers. We've been monitoring our numbers since, since last January. The MacDill numbers at third grade are just holding. They're holding at nine over what our guidelines should be for third grade. We're currently at 66 with two teachers. That would be 33 of those third graders in our fourth grade classrooms, and that's, that's just not acceptable. If we were, you know, two or three students over the guidelines, we would be holding off probably till maybe even as late as August to determine whether those numbers will really hold or not. I pretty firmly believe that we're not going to lose nine students between now and the start of school in third grade at MacDill School. So it just makes sense to, I believe it makes sense to add that teacher now during the hiring season, when we can get the best candidate available, rather than waiting till July or August, when the candidates may not be of the same caliber that we could hire right now. So we're looking for those two positions to be approved tonight.
Just one more piece of information for the board. Bill, is it, is it possible, or less likely, that between the time that we received preliminary numbers for the Title I allocation and the time that we actually received the final notification sometime in August, that that number is going to change upward?
Yes, it could. I don't, I wouldn't want to say yes it will. What the federal government is going to do between now and then, that's why we don't know usually our final allocations until, I think, I'm not sure, for September, maybe October, before we get the final allocation.
Okay. And that, I just raised that point, Alex, particularly for Alex and Trish, just so that you know that this, this is always a moving target. We get quite a bit of money through title funds, and, and we don't really know the, the number. I thought it was in August, but, Bill, you, you know, you know better than I do, September, October. And that's at the point that we're just approving the final budget, but we've already hired staff. So for example, if, if we had been told that we were going to get the, the additional $63,000 or whatever it was, and then, you know, come August, they say, no, you're not going to get that much, you're going to get less than that, then that automatically just comes to, to the district cost without us even having been able to plan for it. So that, that's the world of school budgeting, and it's a very, very moving target. So just wanted to let you know that.
Can I ask, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Sorry. Just keep asking.
Please don't ever be sorry for asking questions.
Okay. So if I understand this correctly, and I want you to correct me if I'm mistaken, the first request is to addition, adds, we're not, we're getting, we're getting $63,000 less from the federal government, and so in order to maintain the same level of teach, reading teachers, we are going to, as a school district, have to pick this up. Is that right?
Right. We've done that, yes. And we've done that in the past.
Okay. And the second part is that we will add a teacher to MacDill?
Correct.
Okay. All right. And can I just make this comment? And this may be my naivete with regards to budgeting. It seems sort of patchwork to me that, a couple of things have come up in the last couple of, of months where we're adding this or adding that. And I guess I'm wondering, is there a grand plan as far as how many teachers we'll need for the next school year? And if there is, when does that happen?
So what we've done a couple of times already is bring to the board preliminary staffing numbers. Unlike perhaps the county, or the city, or any other public entity, we actually don't know the real number until, not even the first day of school. We won't know the real number until the end of the year, because we have, the national average for mobility among students is 14%. So, and we're not very different from the national average in many other, other statistics. Wisconsin happens to be a little less in terms of the mobility rate, because kids tend to stay in, in their, in their families and in these smaller, smaller towns. Those preliminary numbers at the elementary level are based on cohorts of kids moving up to the next, next year. But we get a lot of people who move in during the summer. We get a lot of people who leave because of transfers or for other reasons. So that number, Trish, constantly fluctuates. All right? But as Bill pointed out, in the case of MacDill, we don't believe that that nine is going to change. We don't think that that's going to drop down. And why? Because historically, at MacDill, as an example, those numbers tend to be relatively stable. There are other schools that have had more volatility. At the secondary level, we have a situation where kids sign up for classes at the end of January, beginning of February for the following school year. But because of kids who fail classes at the end of second semester, kids who move in and out of the district, and kids who take summer school, those numbers in those classes are going to change right up to the beginning of the school year. So our staffing is, we have to predict, based on past experience and, excuse me, what we think is going to happen, as opposed to what we know is happening. And so it's a world of fluctuation in, in the numbers of kids. And what we do is, we keep tabs weekly on every classroom at the elementary level in every school as to what the enrollments are going to be. And we have three ways to support them. We either add an educational assistant, we put in a teacher part-time in the core areas of English, math, science, social studies, reading, or we add a full-time teacher. So it's an EA, a half-time teacher, or a full-time teacher in order to mitigate some of those numbers. So in this case, we're very certain that, that nine is not going to change, and that's why we're coming forward with a 1.0 recommendation. So you're absolutely right. It is a patchwork.
Any other questions, Trish?
No, I'm good. Thanks.
Okay. Kim?
I just want to make sure I'm reading this right, and I apologize if you went through that, but on your, on the background, it says, "Due to the decrease in Title I funds and less carryover funds, we do not have enough Title I funds to cover 10 FTEs of the reading teachers." They'll give us enough for nine, and we're only going to need the one.
Correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure I understood.
Correct. They're still funding the other reading positions.
Okay. Hopefully, they'll find the money someplace.
Any other questions for Bill? Okay. If I can just take a second, and while I want to thank everyone, I just want to particularly thank the second-grade teachers at MacDill for what they've done this year with the huge class loads. I'm very grateful for what you do. And we need to, yep.
We need to make the motions, don't we?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve the 1.0 reading teacher FTE at the elementary level for the 1415 school year, because we want to do these separately, correct?
Yes.
Second.
Any other discussion? Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Paxton?
Yes.
Mr. Okunowski?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Scher?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
We need another motion to approve. I'll make it.
I'll make the motion to approve the additional 1.0 classroom teacher FTE at the elementary level for the 1415 class, uh, school year.
Second. Take mine back. Oh, I'm sorry. No, I take it back. You go. Let it be your second. She's just trying to move it along. Sorry.
Okay. Any discussion on that one? All right. Roll call vote.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Paxton?
Yes.
Mr. Okunowski?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Scher?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Scher?
Yes.
Motion carries 7 to 0.
Okay, we're on to open enrollment. Greg Neen.
Okay, good evening, everyone. What you have in front of you tonight is a memorandum of understanding that has been put together by a number of Central Wisconsin Superintendent and Directors of Student Services, or Directors of Special Education. What it attempts to do is, it attempts to bring some uniformity to the special education costs as they relate to our annual open enrollment process. Each year, the school district receives open enrollment applications from districts outside of the district, and we also have students who open enroll out of the district. For your standard, regular education student, the cost distribution that happens between those districts is roughly $6,600. But for special education students that want to open enroll in or out of a district, there needs to be a student-specific cost estimate that is prepared by the receiving district. So in other words, if we were to receive a open enrollment application from Wisconsin Rapids, and the student had special education needs, Stevens Point would prepare a cost estimate, and we would submit that cost estimate to Wisconsin Rapids. Wisconsin Rapids, then, would have the option of approving the application as it was, or denying it for one of the reasons listed. One of the reasons that's frequently used to deny open enrollment special education applications is undue financial burden. This memorandum of understanding will address about 80% of our special education movement in the Central Wisconsin area, such that we will have a standardized approach to, like I said, a majority of our special education population. This will allow for less clerical and administrative time being used to make those calculations. It'll also result in a faster turnaround time for our notification to parents, and it'll be a much, much more parent and district-friendly process. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Greg? All right, then I would entertain a motion. It's on the second.
While she's looking for it, I'll make a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding, open enrollment, enrollment joint cost sharing agreement, 14-15 equitable participation agreement, as presented and attached.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Pokonoski?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
7 to 0, motion carries.
Thank you. Next, we have recommendations for employment. Director of Elementary Education. Is this from you?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. We've been searching for both a Director of Elementary Education and Director of Human Resources. The latter position is one that the board will discuss in closed session tonight. The Director of Elementary Ed, as you can see from the memo, we followed a relatively rigorous process involving various stakeholders, and we're recommending that Dave Lockett, the current principal at Jefferson Elementary, as the Director of Elementary Ed effective July 1st. We've attached a copy of the contract, including the salary, and it falls within the salary bands that have been established by the board for that level position. It's an 11-month cabinet position, and we strongly make the recommendation.
Do we have any questions? Or discussion?
Well, I have discussion, but I thought we should make the motion first. We're doing it a little backwards this time.
According to the WASB guy, he said we didn't have to.
Okay, go for it.
Chris?
Well, I was going to make a motion, but.
Go for it.
Thank you. Move to approve the employment of Dave Lockett as the Director of Elementary Education per the attached contract.
I'll second that.
Okay. Lisa?
I actually have quite a number of issues. If this is a cabinet position, is there a reason it's not a 12-month contract, and instead is 11?
Right. When we established the Directors of Elementary and Secondary Education and approved by the board, we recommended and the board approved these two positions as 11-month. And the reason is, is that the elementary principals with whom they work are 11-month positions as well. And all of these contracts are standard. That is, the cabinet-level 11-month positions are standard contracts, 12-month are standard, and then all the other 11-month positions in the district are standard contracts as well. And the reason that, as I said, 11-month is because the principals with whom they work are 11-month. And secondly, you'll notice that in the 11-month positions, there are no vacation time, because they get that month of July. And it's, again, what the board approved and what we've been, what we've been operating under.
And I understand that the board did approve it, and I'm just not so sure that the newly seated board wants to continue in that direction, and might want to view it as, if we go with the 12-month contract, as the, before we broke out the two positions, which was the case with the prior education or curriculum directors. One option that they do have is that they can pick their vacation time. So they don't have to take that month of July, which I would think they would appreciate.
Can I, can I just offer something, Lisa, to that, if I may? The, first of all, the 11-month positions are less costly to the district in a variety of ways. If it's a 12-month contract, the salary would be higher, and in addition to that, you'd have vacation time. In this particular instance, the, I lost my train of thought. So that is, that is one situation. Oh, I, the other one. Just for clarification, for Trish and for Alex, starting with the 11-12 school year, we changed what had been one position that was an Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction to two-position, Director of Elementary and Secondary Ed. And we also collapsed a reading coordinator position, which was a little more than a teacher contract year, and we collapsed those two, and we created, created two different ones, and it was essentially cost-neutral to the district. But we got a much bigger bang for the buck, because we recognized that the elementary schools needed more direct attention, and the secondary schools as well. So they got more services from the directors, because they were assigned to a specific set of grade levels. So that's why we collapsed that one position. One person I discovered in the first year, in a district this size, could not perform all of the functions of the job. But if we divided it into elementary and secondary, it could, and in fact, it's worked very, very well. Secondary schools and elementary schools have gotten much more service from those two positions over the past three years. So that, I just wanted to clarify.
No, that's fine. I have a hard time believing that $105,500, that we would have to pay more if we went to a 12-month contract. I think the $105,000 is justified enough. I mean, I think that's enough money for a 12-month contract. But that being said, I have never supported, and I will never support, cabinet getting an additional 2% on their, on their salary in a TSA when we have not compensated the rest of our staff at an appropriate level. I handed out a spreadsheet for all the board members. I particularly wanted the new board members to see where we've been, as far as the raises that were supplied by the memo from the superintendent, and then the raises that were given out in January, just so that you could see the difference. And when you add that additional 2%, one thing that Trish and Alex are probably not aware of, there was an eight-year agreement with the administration that they were to get certain benefits through those eight-year terms. Once the eight-year ended, we now can do whatever we want for each individual contract. And that's when the 2% came in, and, you know, various things happened. So I'm, again, I won't support this contract just for that mere fact alone. The other issue I have is that this is a two-year contract. When our handbook in 3.05 clearly states that our certified staff has one academic year of a trial period, so I'm not really sure I'm understanding why we would do a two-year contract when the trial period is one year. So those are my concerns with this. And the other thing I'm questioning, I don't understand, and clearly you know that, and I don't know why we're going into closed session for the HR position and not for this position. Is there something, I mean, should we be going into closed session to discuss this further? I mean, is it, I mean, I don't understand why we're going into closed session for one and not the other.
When we were setting the agenda, and I informed Angel that we had these two positions, and there are some specific items about the other position and the candidate, which we need to discuss with the board in closed session, there aren't any on this one. If I, if I could, just provide some clarification again for Trish and Alex. The contract has a trial period, as it's stated in the handbook, and it's a one-year trial period, such that if the individual does not perform, that that individual could be released from that position. In this case, the board also has the ability to reassign the individual for the second year of the contract, or if the performance is so egregious, there's processes for that. The administrator is also covered under Wisconsin statutes as our teachers, in terms of termination, dismissal, or discharge, and we would certainly follow those processes. But if at the end of the first year, any individual administrator who did not perform up to standards, that individual could be removed from that position. Secondly, the, in the, in the fall of 2011 and January of 2012, the board and I engaged in three separate closed sessions regarding administrator contracts. And at that time, we walked through a very important set of criteria, as well as information related to compensation of current administrators. And the board approved a different level of compensation for cabinet, in terms of salary bands, as well as two benefits that are different in cabinet than they are in other administrative contracts. One is which Lisa pointed out, and it's optional. It's not automatically done. There have been cabinet members who have not taken advantage of it. And the other one is the floating holiday. So those are the, the two things that make it different from other, other contracts in addition to the salary. We've done, we've worked very hard to keep people within the salary bands. Be glad to provide those to you. They, again, were board-approved. And the final item is that the MS agreement, as it's called, Management Staff, and it actually had a few more words there, but it was called the MS agreement, had been approved by a board, as Lisa pointed out, it's been now nine years ago. And when Act 10 came into play, that agreement, which essentially was a contract between the board and its administrators, was still in effect. And there were several opinions written by attorneys from both law firms that the district used at the time, Clark and Lathrop, or Lathrop and Clark, and Davis-Kilfau, as well as one that was written by, I believe it was either the Wisconsin Association of School Boards, or the Governmental Accountability Board, which indicated that the enforcement of the MS agreement was the same as a collective bargaining agreement. So there was no getting out of that agreement, and the Act 10 didn't end that agreement. It, it ended collective bargaining agreements. This was not a collective bargaining agreement, but it had the same force as one. So the percentages and so on that you see here listed, the differences are because when, on May 28th, when we gave this information to the board, we had, the board had not yet approved anything for 12-13 or 13-14. So the one underneath that, you can see, for 12-13, it says 1.5% for many of those groups. Where above, it said 0%. That was the reason for the change. So the changes result from board action, not from anything that the administration did. But the MS agreement has expired, and again, in January of 2012 is when the board approved these contracts and all of the items in them. There were none added since that time, and the reason that the board needed to do that as early as 2012 is that in the event that the board wanted to take any action regarding any administrator, that is a preliminary notice of non-renewal and that kind of thing, it needed to do that a year and a half in advance. So we developed the contracts, the board approved those, they approved all of the items, the benefits and salary ranges that were to go in those contracts, and that's exactly what we've been following. You got a hand there.
Yep. Lisa, do you have any follow-up questions?
Nope.
Okay, Chris?
Couple things. I'm, I'm actually very happy to hear that this is being offered to Mr. Lockett. I've known him for years. I've worked with him in, at schools, on referendums and that, and I, I know that he has a tremendous amount of respect in our schools. I think when we look at a position, and we look at the contracts, I think one of the things that isn't always discussed is that people in different positions have different knowledge, different responsibilities, different experiences. They're not always going to equal what every other position has. So I think you really need to look at those in the entirety of what their, their job is. I respect what you said, Lisa, in not being comfortable, but I also believe that it's really important to have leadership in our district that is respected. And Dave is not responsible for what's in that contract. If that's part of what we're offering him, I think we should look at the idea of, who do we want in that position? And will they be a role model for a district? And I think Dave will. So I am going to support this.
Kim?
And, and I somewhat agree with you, Chris, that our leaders of our district, to me, are our teachers. And we can't offer our teachers 2% on an annual turnaround. I can't see us getting it to our administration when our teachers take the lump of the work. Yes, the administration are supposed to implement the policies and do a lot of stuff that help the teachers, but I'm not going to support it for that, and I didn't support it back in 2011 or '12. Our lives have changed. Our programs have changed here. I think we need to look at all of the contracts, look at them all. We discussed that, about doing that. And I would support a one-year trial period, because then everybody, attachment that came with, with the memo also, was where everybody's contracts expire. So then his policy will expire, or his contract would expire with everybody else, if I'm reading this correctly. And I would, even though I don't like to go into closed session, before I can approve this position, I would like to go into closed session and talk about the person that we're offering it to. And I can't do that in open public. So I will not support it.
Trish?
I have a couple of questions. This management, what did you call it, management agreement?
Management staff agreement.
Thank you. Management staff agreement, that is what I wrote down. That expired in 2012, is that right?
No, expired June 30th of 2013. So these new contracts went into effect July 1st of 2013, this school year.
How many people have been hired since the management staff contract expired?
This year.
That are cabinet or administrators?
Right, so, so this year, administrators, we've employed the Director of Secondary Ed, a permanent appointment. The lead elementary principal, Bill Carlson, is in interim in that position. He's retiring for good. We hired John Shepard, a Director of Transportation, as a, not director, I'm sorry, transportation manager. I believe, is Greg in the room? Greg, how many psychologists did we employ this year? Two?
Two.
Two. So there were two psychologists that, that received a contract. Ryan, the Washington principal was new this year, and.
4K.
Oh, thank you. 4K principal, the early learning principal was new this year. So I think that's a total of, what, seven?
Heather Kramer, true.
Sorry?
Heather Kramer was.
Oh, yeah. Elementary principal at McKinley, thank you.
Frank Casey.
And the Director of Technology, thank you. See, my staff knows, that's good.
And, and of these people, how many of them had, you know, the 2%? I mean, I think that.
Cabinet-level positions. There are six cabinet-level positions. Two are 11-month, and the rest are 12-month.
And those have all been approved by the same group?
Correct.
Well, by the previous board.
They were, they were approved by the board, yes, they were approved by the previous board.
Okay. And I guess I just want to make one last comment. This, this chart is, really points out a glaring error, or glaring problem, not an error problem, in that all of these zeros and this 8.7%. I mean, that's, this is really, this chart right here is really powerful. And, and, and I have a concern. I, about the number of zeros on here, this is, really bothers me. But I think that probably everybody that's heard this, is watching this, has heard me say this already, that I'm really concerned about these. But like Chris, I support Dave Lockett. I know Dave Lockett. I, I don't think I know him as well as you do, but I support him, and I think that he does have, after having talked to a number of teachers at Jefferson, I think that he does command their respect and leadership. So I will support him, but, but I have to say, this, this is really, this really bothers me. This really makes my blood pressure go up, all of the zeros below the level of administration. So with that, I will support him, but.
If I can just give you just a little, a little window here. The, and I have to tell you that it bothers me, it bothers the administration, and it bothers, bothered the previous board. This is not a function of the administration. It's not a function of anything else. What it's a function of is, is, is number one, Act 10. Number two is the finances of the district. And number three is, is that the, the board and the administration need to work together to find out, to, to find a way to remedy that. And the MS agreement lasted until June 30th of 2013. That was not something that, that, for example, walking in the door, I had any control over. It was there, when I got here, it's been there for eight, it was there for eight years. And it had the force of a collective bargaining agreement, but it wasn't one, which is why it was not affected by Act 10. So I understand your concern. I share your concern, Trish, and it's something that the board can do something about, provided that the finances are there to do that. So we have information, you know, for the board, when it comes time to, when the board is ready to look at salary increases for, for example, 13-14, and certainly with negotiations with the unions, the four unions that we have. And, you know, the negotiations will be discussed in closed session, and the salary employee increases for 13-14, the administration is currently working on that and developing what we think the board, the district can afford.
Any follow-up, Trish?
No.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Can we offer a one-year contract?
The board certainly can do that. I will tell you that among several other factors, there wouldn't be too many people that would accept a one-year contract as an administrator.
But if they do a good job, they would continue their contract, we would renew it, so.
I understand.
And how would that be different from, I mean, why would they not accept it? I mean.
I think administrative positions are very different from teacher positions. There is a much greater accountability publicly, as, as well as organizationally. It's not to say that their work is more important than teacher work, and, and I would agree with you, a statement you made earlier, Kim. But they are the ones who turn on and turn off the lights and doors every day, they're responsible for incredible number of things. And much like my position, there aren't a lot of people that want to publicly take on what, what people have to do, coming to this podium. on what people have to do, coming to this podium periodically to present programs and recommendations. And I just, you know, administration is not a field that there are a lot of people rushing to get into. It's become more difficult and much more public over the years. So I'm just here to tell you that every candidate for administration that we've interviewed, certainly at the cabinet level, has asked me point-blank, is this a two-year contract or not? And if it isn't, they've said openly, we're, you know, we're not going to, we're not going to apply, or we're not going to continue the process, so.
But the truth be told, it's the board who has to decide, not the, I mean, we are the employer-
Correct.
And with the one-year trial period, it really is a one-year, so why not call it what it really is?
It's a two-year contract with a one-year trial period. I suppose it's two ways of looking at the same thing, Lisa. You're absolutely correct. The board is the decision-maker. We've brought forward a recommendation, and the board can decide what it wants to do with that.
Okay. Any further conversation? Okay. We have a motion, which is to approve Dave Lockett. Could you please read it, Amy?
Motion to approve the employment of David Lockett as the director of elementary education per the attached contract.
Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Kokonoski?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sherrick?
I'm going to vote no, but I'm going to vote no, not due to Mr. Lockett, but due to the contract. I don't want him to be mad at me or anything like that.
Ms. Totten?
No.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Motion carries five to two.
We are on to, second reading of policy Dangerous Weapons in Schools. And we are on the second reading, so this is the second and final for now.
May I make a motion to approve the policy 832 for second reading as presented?
Any discussion on the weapons policy?
I think the only thing we changed was the word from, we took the word maintenance staff, maintenance staff out, I think it is.
And just made it staff.
Yeah, so.
Yep, in the second reading, Amy.
Yeah, pretty simple.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Kokonoski?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sherrick?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Okay, we are on to, hmm, the summary says second reading.
First reading.
So it's a first reading of the changing of the superintendent's contract. And just to clarify, I got some questions about why this memo was back in here. It's not at all to debate the issues of the memo, it's just a reference point of where this idea even came from. We are not going over this issue again. So all we're asking is for the date to be changed to March 30th, and the point is then the board that has been sitting during that year will be reviewing that year. Yes?
I would recommend that we go back to January instead of March. That was the old timeframe that we had always used with the superintendent, so that if there was a desire by the board to do a nonrenew, which needs to be done, what is it, the end of February? I think that's a date, there's a date.
There are actually two dates right now by board action.
Well, no, I know, but the statute one, the one not, we changed it with the board action, I know that, but-
Right. The statute indicates that, you're actually talking about two different things. This policy has to do with the evaluation, and the statute has to do with the contract.
Correct.
So the evaluations, and I went back in history and looked at this, that superintendent's evaluations have always been done prior to June 30th, when they were done. But the contracts had been done, either renewed or not renewed, for two years in January of the year before the year that the individual, the contract expired, so 18 months in advance. So if the board decided not to renew a superintendent's contract at that period in January, you had a superintendent sitting for 18 months.
And what is it that statute requires?
Eighteen months.
Okay, so if the-
But the board can change that, as it did, to a different timeline.
Okay. So if statute says 18 months, and it has to be done by the end of January, February, I would think the board would want to go back to January for an evaluation, and then the board, the sitting board will have had the experience with the superintendent, instead of using the March date.
Would you like to make a motion to that effect?
I would make a motion that we change the date from June to January 30th for the first reading.
For the evaluation of the superintendent? Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Chris?
I'm not going to vote for that. I prefer the March 30th. Also, in line number four, I sent an email that the word immediately is misspelled.
It is.
Just to, if anybody cares.
Yeah. And Amy, when you do these changes, any changes, if you can put those in red for the, that would be great. Thank you.
I think March 30th makes a lot more sense with the contract than the evaluation, so.
Kim?
I know I've said this enough times, but I would like to go more on a quarterly evaluation, maybe save the big one, you know, for the year. But if we hit, anytime I've had, either I've worked for people or they worked under me, we usually did it almost on a weekly, but it was different. And I think this way, we can keep, as the board, say, okay, what have we all done? Where have we completed with this? And I know we do it in your report, but I think if we do it in a workshop or session, we can kind of stay abreast about it, you know, so something at the end of the year doesn't come, and we'll say, oh, my gosh, you know, this was never completed, you know, such as the morale plan, where is that? I mean, we don't have a clue where that is. And so if we had quarterly evaluations, we could keep up on everything. I mean, we all have full-time jobs and families. We can't keep apprised of everything that goes on. I would like to see a quarterly evaluation. I know, you know, I seen people cringe and crawl back in their chair when I said it, but that's what I would love to see in there, so. And I will support the January. We always had January before, and I think someone told me, you know, that's normally when they do it, is in the January. So again, most of the board's going to be there, it's going to be before, you know, we even go into our big rooting for the new forum, or, you know, going to the forums and stuff like that, so.
I just want to clarify, the board has not had January 30th as the date for evaluations. That's been the contractual renewal or preliminary notice of nonrenewal. It's always been June 30th. So just to clarify that. The March 30th date is a new date in terms of that June 30th date. It's not, it's not January. Just historically, it's always been June 30th.
Trish? Yeah? Can I ask, how far, you've gone back and researched this? And how far back have you gone?
Three superintendents before me.
Okay. And it's always been June 30th?
When it's been done.
Great.
Well, the evaluation on 10/11 was done January 9th. 11/12 was nothing. And I'm getting this from his report.
Right. But you have to also remember that when you look at that, that's a function of the board. That was not a function of the superintendent. So it took the board a long time to get that evaluation done, and it wasn't delivered to me until that, those dates that I indicated in my report. So it's really a function of the board adhering to a deadline.
Can I ask a procedural question?
Yes.
We have a motion, do we have a motion on the floor to accept it as March 30th?
No, January 30th.
That's the only thing we have on the floor?
Yes. Right. The date.
Okay, but you made a-
Do you want us to send it back to January?
Yeah, okay.
So that's the motion, that's on the floor?
Yes.
So I'd like to amend the motion.
Okay. What is your amendment?
To move that date to March 30th.
Second.
Discussion. I have a question, and you guys may be able to, it's as much for all of you as anyone else. For some reason, I remember the January agendas were very heavy. Does anyone recall if that was due to the time of year and the things that had to be approved at that point? Or where it's kind of lightened since then? I mean, we were kind of here till 1:00 and 2:00 in the morning. Do you remember why? Or if it was just that we just happened to have that much information? I just don't want to put something in a really heavy period of time, but if it's, otherwise, it makes absolutely no difference to me.
Well, in the past, we've always taken, like, the end of December off, when I was first on the board, so I can't say that. I mean, I think this year was just a crazy year with losing the committees and all of the projects that we have put on our plate, so. But we just make time for it, if that's what the board wants, so.
Well, Kim is, Kim is right. The agendas have become increasingly longer since last April, and the committees were gone, but they've also become longer, and I'm not, I'm not making a value judgment about this, it's just a statement of fact, that the number of items that individual board members have requested to be on the agendas, and that the number of agenda items that the board itself has approved, has lengthened. As a result of that, the meetings have lengthened, and the last two meetings have had board packets that have been over 1,000 pages. So it hasn't lightened since January. If anything, it's gotten bigger. So, I mean, that's just a fact, so, and it is because of the actions that the board took last April.
Okay, so, yes.
Yeah, I would like to give the sitting board as much time to work with the superintendent to give an effective evaluation, so. I would prefer the later date, the March 30th. I'd prefer June, but I know there, there's issues with that as well, so.
What issues are there?
Well, the new board members coming in. That was the objection, that's why we even proposed moving it back.
But the reality is, we can do the evaluation at any point. I mean, just because we have the March 30th date doesn't mean we can't do it in January. If we set it as a priority for one reason or another, we can do it in January, right?
Right. Or you could set in here, you could, I mean, I'm not sure you even have to have a date in number one and just say it must be completed annually. I mean, if you want to go with that, and then, you know, the board, when they do the organization meeting and they set their meetings, they could determine when they want to do it.
That really wouldn't be fair to the employee, and I'm not speaking about me, you know, I'm just speaking about what you're going to do with future people who hold the position. It really isn't fair to have that person not know ahead of time when that evaluation's going to take place, to do it annually at an organizational meeting. That just causes way too much flux, and I think a person has, I think, to be fair, I think a person should know when this board will evaluate its superintendent. Everybody else knows when those evaluations take place. I think that your one, well, one of your two employees should know as well.
And if I could just follow up, I think that the March 30th date makes a lot of sense, because first of all, we can move it back to January if we want. If we decide as a board that that's a priority, we can move it to January and get it done then. But the other piece of that is, is the issue that's come up this year is that we know if it's done by March 30th, it gets done by the sitting board members, and it doesn't get put upon the new board members. So I guess I'm going to support the March 30th date, just for those reasons, even though January is an optimal, more optimal, the optimal time to have the evaluation done.
Any other discussion? So first, we need to vote on the amendment, which is switching the date to March 30th.
Correct. Ms. Sherrick?
I'm going to vote no. I want it quarterly.
Ms. Totten?
No.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Kokonoski?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Motion carries five to two.
So that was the amendment, and now we need to vote on the original motion.
So the-
The original motion has been changed.
Right.
It's been amended. So now you need to vote on the policy itself.
Right.
We need a new motion to do that?
Right, as amended.
I will make a motion to accept the first reading of the, what's the number here?
Room 222.
Room 222. That has March 30th as the deadline in it.
Second. Thank you.
Ms. Totten?
Oh, hang on, let me just see, anybody have anything else they want to add to that? Okay, roll call vote.
Ms. Totten?
No.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Kokonoski?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sherrick?
Yes.
Motion carries six to one.
It's coming back anyway, so.
Yeah, that was just a first reading.
I didn't say court.
Okay, we are now on to the approval of future agenda items. So what we are voting on right now is if these items should show up on a future agenda. And we will give the person who is, whose name is behind them, just a brief moment to speak and explain what it is they're asking for. Okay, so the first is, A, additional instructional leaders' options, by Kim Sherrick.
That was nipped in the bud with his superintendent report today. Correct?
I just provided information based on what your request was, so.
I'm going to say, let's drop it for right now. If any of the educational leaders would like to come and talk to me about it, I would greatly appreciate it.
Okay, the review of the 100 series of board policies, Chris?
Yeah, I requested that we take a look at that 100 series policy, no timeline, maybe during the year. We have a new board. The last year, I think, is not a surprise to anyone that we've had some real questions about how are we functioning? We've had a facilitator in here more than once. So I think it's, if you have rules and you have policies that you can look at, it's a good idea to take a look at those and see what, how we govern ourselves. So I'm not putting any specified, you know, I'm just saying during the year, we should be looking at 100.
So you don't have a timeline?
We don't have discussion.
I don't have a timeline. I mean, if the board decides they want to look at two, or two a month, or two a board meeting, whatever, whatever the board wants to do. But I think they're really, I looked at some that we are absolutely, as a board, not following. Absolutely. There's no, it's not, it's black and white. And so if we're going to have policies as board, I think we should take a look at them and see if they're, how we want to govern.
All right. Could you do roll call vote on that?
Need a motion.
She needs a motion and a second first.
So I would move that we take a look at the 100 series policies for the board.
I need a second?
Second.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Kokonoski?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sherrick?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Okay, the next is policy 141, Board Officer Power, Duty, and Responsibilities. Lisa?
I would actually request that this be on our next agenda, so that when we do our organization meeting and we determine who it is that are going to be our officers, if the issue comes up that came up last year, I'm not sure if Alex and Trish are aware of this, but it was a five-hour vote. And so, and the issue really was the issues with the power of the president position. And so I would like to have that on the agenda, so that if the board decides that it needs to address that that evening, that they can do so. I would like to make a motion that policy 141, Board Officers' Power, Duties, and Responsibility, be on the next agenda.
Oh, roll call vote?
Ms. Faxon? Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Kokonoski?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Shirk?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Policy 830, the use of school, oh, Mr. Presley's not here. Is it all right if we bring it back so he can explain, or would...
Can I just make a motion that we put Policy 830, Use of School Facilities, as an agenda item?
Yes, you may. Do we have a second?
I will second that.
I'm not going to make any discussion, but.
Do you have a time, do you, is there a timeline?
Well, within, within the timeline that we put as a policy. I don't think there's any timeline, but.
Okay, go ahead, Amy.
Mr. Kokonoski?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Shirk?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Motion carries seven, zero.
All right. We are now on to televising meetings, which there is a memo about.
Um, I understand, Dan, that you're now giving, given the responsibility for this project. I assume that that's who this was in reference to, this...
Yeah, I didn't want to, out of respect for, for Dan and his family, I certainly didn't want to reference him specifically, but Dan is charged with following up. I talked with Dan today about it, actually, about making sure that we get a complete set of numbers for what it would cost to broadcast live, if it were provided by the district, and then what the cost would be to broadcast, to broadcast it via tape, that is, instead of live, but just tape. So, so the board would have two different costs it could look at.
And, and I appreciate that. My concern is that this has been postponed three times, and I'm getting more calls about more people that actually watch the, the board meetings and are unable to do so now. So, you know, if, if we need to postpone this one more time, I would request that it be moved up into the agenda higher, so that we definitely get it covered, get it handled, because the community wants to see these board meetings, so.
Just, I, I have a question, because I really don't know this, and, and so this is, when I went online before coming to the district, I was able to view all the board meetings. The public can view board meetings now, they're taped and they're put on. Dan, how many days after the board meeting?
When there are the long meetings, at most, two days after.
So two days after, it's online and the board can, or the community can view the entire meeting. Prior to my coming, were board meetings televised live?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and it was through the city, correct? Dan?
Yes, it was done through Charter, but due to the antiquated equipment that's in place, and the problems we were having with it, John from Cable Access decided that we would no longer do that, because we had to continually get Charter involved to, to fix this equipment, and that's all they were doing, just patching it and not replacing any of it to get it working better.
So when, when you say it was postponed three times, actually, the first time, a memo was produced by Brian, and I think in both cases, last meeting and the weekend, the, the meeting before, it got very late, and, and Brian, I think, left, come on forward, Brian. And then, I think you asked, Lisa, that you wanted more detail, more information regarding the cost of what it would take to broadcast it live if we did it live. And so, that was an additional thing we didn't understand, and so that's what I've directed Brian and, and Dan to do, is to look into that. So while there, there has been a delay, there have been, I think in my opinion, there have been good reasons for that delay. One was misunderstanding exactly what it is that you wanted, and the second one was that I think Brian had to leave the, the meetings.
Well, it, it, it really doesn't matter. That does, I have a different interpretation of what happened. The understanding was clear, and you produced the information. The problem was that it got pushed, it was further down, you were gone, you couldn't answer the questions. I'm, I'm not pointing fingers, I'm just saying, I want to make sure that this gets addressed, that there are people who watch it on television, do not watch it online, and, like I said, more and more people are questioning it, so.
And there's a recent development, too. We've, we've just learned recently, last week, that Charter may actually be able to bring fiber optic cable to this building in a redundant loop. And that would be tremendous for the district for a number of reasons. We'd have a redundant loop, which would allow us to have a lot better data, and then we could actually tap into that line and broadcasting this board meeting would be no problem. We would not have to invest in equipment. But what you're asking, to do a live broadcast right now under these circumstances, we have to buy a lot of equipment, we're basically becoming like a TV station, and it's something we don't know about, so we're trying to learn about. I, I would recommend waiting until we find out from Charter. That would be the preferred solution, and we could do it very easily and affordably, but, and as opposed to moving forward and buying equipment that we may not need.
So something will come back next?
We're waiting to hear. It's, it's really up to Charter whether they want to do that or not, so we're hoping to get an answer from them fairly soon. I will follow up with it, and as soon as I receive information, I will forward it onto the board.
Dan, how long have we been not broadcasting live?
I think it's been about three years.
Okay, so, it, it, it is true that even when the city decided to stop providing that, that access, that it's been a two-day turnaround, that the community, so, it, it hasn't been any, anything different in three years?
Correct, I mean...
Other than we added on, on the streaming it?
Correct.
Okay.
And we, we no longer, they can no longer watch it on cable?
And just so I can throw something in, I do have some numbers coming on what it would cost for the equipment to be able to do it in our current situation without Charter.
Well, we'll have both of those numbers, what it would cost if Charter were to bring in fiber optic cable, and also if we had to buy the additional equipment, so.
Dan, just so that everybody is clear, how can a community member watch the board meeting two days once, two days after it happens? What, what is the mechanism by which they watch it?
They would have to go to the district website under Board, and...
Meetings, probably.
Yeah, and videos, yeah. The, the issue are the people who don't use the computers, so they don't do it online. That isn't their mode.
And that's ever since the city stopped indicating that they would no longer produce it and put it on the air?
Correct.
Correct, and we've been doing, we've been doing the, putting them on the web ever since I've been doing meetings, which has been close to 11 years now.
Right, right.
Jeff?
Would the live streaming be an addition to archiving, so the video archives would still be available through the website?
Yes, it's, yes, it's...
Any other questions?
But we'll wait for your stuff.
Thank you, Brian. Thanks, Dan.
It is 8:50, and we are going to take a five-minute break, which means please be back here at 8:55, and we will start discussion again. We're at five minutes, if everyone can have a seat, please. Thank you. All right, the next thing we have is to appoint someone to our Consolidated Task Force, which for those who are watching, is the same as the Super Task Force people have been referring to.
I'd like to make a motion that we put Kim Shirk in that position, because she's been attending the meetings and is the most appraised board member that I'm aware of for this position.
I think we have ballots, yeah. The, the policy is that board members will be asked for their interest in serving as non-voting ex officio members on committees, task forces, councils, et cetera. The board shall elect interested board members, ensuring equity of board member participation. We sent out an email asking for interest, two people responded, Kim Shirk, Chris Scott. What we've done is drawn up ballots to hand out. There are also lines at the bottom, please do not put my name on the line.
Why, many can we vote for?
One, right?
Well, the, the board can appoint, too, but...
Actually, yeah.
It's up to you.
Yeah, why, do we want more than...
If they both want to do it.
I'd say anybody can come, what I was told, and I want to do tell, I don't know if Mr. Neen is here, I did enjoy his facilitating the other day.
Well, we seem to have an agreement that if both want to go, so be it.
Yeah, it's fine.
I just don't, I was going to say something really sassy, but it's a sassy joke.
You have to follow the policy by official appointment.
Okay.
Oh, okay, we have to be appointed.
Did someone please make a motion?
I would like to amend my motion and include Chris Scott on...
And I will second that motion.
Second the amendment, correct, Amy?
You've got a safe paper, Amy.
Now, is that second the amendment, she amended her own motion?
She amended her own, okay.
We're just, we're going to use it again someday.
Excellent, okay. So the motion is to approve Kim Shirk and Chris Scott as representatives to the Consolidated Task Force. Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Shirk?
Do we have to have our discussion now, or can we do it after the vote? Any discussion, can we only discuss the vote?
Yeah, now.
Discuss before the vote.
Okay, right, but I mean, can we only do the, discuss the appointment of it, or can we discuss the CTF?
You can only really discuss the appointment.
Just the appointment.
Then, I got to put that on the agenda for next time.
I will write it down.
Yes, I will, yes. I'm going anyways.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Kokonoski?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Excellent, have a good time.
Well, I just, it's very interesting, it's interesting to learn about it, and so then you don't have to come, when they come here, you know about it. I know, quit giving me the, quit talking about it, Totten.
Okay, we are on to number four, which is board meeting dates for May and June. This is something, I requested that was on here primarily because we haven't elected officers, and it's officers who set the agenda. We have several agenda items that we need to get on an agenda to meet the 60 days, and so it would be helpful if we had May dates and June dates set. The other issue being that Carlson Detman has asked for us to choose between May 14th and 19th, so I don't know if we would like that as a board to supersede one of the May meeting dates, because we're going to have a lot of information given to us, or if we want to have two meetings in May, two in June, but those were, those are my thoughts. It's all open for discussion.
When you say supersede, are you saying one of the dates would supersede the 12th?
No, probably the next, well, I guess on the 14th.
It's a Wednesday.
Okay.
So be more the one after Memorial Day. There, we, we have quite a few things backlog that need to be, to get on, so I think we'd have to decide as a board, do we want to conquer them all in June, or should we have a second meeting in May as well? Chris, are you raising your hand?
Yeah, the Detman thing, he, he preferred the 19th?
He did, he said he could make the 14th work, but he really preferred the 19th.
So I would support the 19th for him. We have a board meeting on the 12th, and I think one of the suggestions, I'm in the wrong agenda item, but the 27th, the day after Memorial Day, which is a Tuesday.
Oh, so Consolidated Task Force is already meeting?
But it meets before the board meeting, and...
It's 5 to 7.
Right, but, I mean, it, it's one of those that would overlap. We knew that when we put that suggestion out there, but, quite frankly, with the limited number of dates potentially available...
How about the 28th? It's a Wednesday.
28th for the board meeting.
A board meeting.
That would work for me. The 27th doesn't work for me.
I can do the 28th as well.
Tuesdays are all, Tuesday nights are all booked up.
I won't be here that week, my son graduates from college, and I'll be out, so I won't, so, so no date.
The whole week, okay.
Yeah, no date that work, that week works for me, which I'd really like to be here for that, but I understand people can't work around my schedule.
For the, for the second meeting, or for the Detman?
The 20, the, the 27th through the 30th, I'll be out east.
So even for a regular board meeting, you'd prefer not to have it that week?
Yeah, and, but I understand that, that's...
Would it be pushing too much to do it the 12th and the 19th?
The 19th would be...
We have the Detman thing, okay.
Up in another day that week?
Or what if we went, what if we went with June 2nd, 9th, and 23rd?
It's a little hard to have a board meeting one week right after the other one.
I know, I know, I'm just throwing out.
Or second 16th, 30th.
Or 21st, the 21st is a Wednesday. That's, that's at least nine days after the 12th, but, you know, a little bit more time, the board packets, we'd probably get those out on, if we can get them out on Friday, we'll try, but if we can't, we'd have to go out on Monday. I don't know how, I, I don't know how else to, to do that, I mean, it's...
And that I can't do with a full-time job, I, I just can't.
So can't we just do the, the 9th and the 23rd of June? Do, do you have to have another one in May?
I don't. Does everybody want to do that, just skip the second May meeting, since we're having the Detman thing in Memorial Day, or we could also go in June, we could choose, we can do whatever we want, so we can choose the second and the 23rd if we want?
And then the new, the, at the organizational meeting, you can always...
Amended.
Adjust it.
I just want to get people dates for the things that they've asked for.
Okay, so, meet the 12th, meet the 19th, for the workshop, for the workshop, and then meet the...
Second?
Second and 23rd?
No, the 9th.
Oh, I'm sorry, the 9th and the 23rd, that would be beautiful.
That goes back, that, that takes the 9th and the 23rd back to our regular...
Yeah.
And then at that point, if we decide we, we need to have more meetings?
Or if we decide on the 12th, we can always change it, right?
So that's all right with everybody, I just want to start assigning dates, so. Excellent. I don't think we need to make a motion about that, oh.
Actually, you do.
We do, it's a pretty official thing.
I'll make the motion of whatever dates you just chose.
Okay, so.
So run through them again, though, so...
Chris just made a motion that we will have meetings on May 12th, June 9th, and June 23rd, and that the Carlton, Carlson-Detman workshop will be on the 19th. Do we have a second?
Yes.
Trish seconds it.
The administration very, is grateful for that, because there are a number of things that occur at the end of May. There's the graduation, there's the special ed graduation, there's the alternative school graduation, and the number of the retirement dinner, there's a number of evening events, so we're very appreciative.
So we won't need to, everything will be at least taken care of, then on the 12th, for all that to happen smoothly, okay? Well, we could just have like a six-hour meeting on the 12th, and...
She's so fun, okay? Would you please take a roll call vote on that?
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Kokonoski?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Shirk?
Yes.
Motion carries seven, zero.
Okay, annually, we have to appoint someone to go to the CISA 5 convention. It is, I went last year, it's a very brief meeting, and what do you know, this year it's in Stevens Point, so someone doesn't even have to drive to Portage, so.
Well, I'm going to be there, because there's another, other event, I'm going to be at the Holiday Inn for a different event, but that's...
Can I now make you, Jeff?
Well, actually, that's on the 15th. Yeah, it's the 15th.
It doesn't give us the date, does it?
Yeah, it's in here somewhere.
May 15th, I think, on Thursday.
Thursday, May 15th.
That's when we have the art show, right?
And it's at 6:30?
Seven.
Seven, okay. Yeah, see, I have Leadership Board, Tony has their...
So can I make a motion to nominate Jeff Ebel?
You don't have a conflict of interest? You don't have a conflict of interest?
I'm sure I do.
Don't tell us about it until afterwards.
This is open for anybody to go to, but I can tell you, having been at it, it's very, it's just very organizational. There isn't much information given out. Very easy. It is.
Did I get a second on that?
Yeah, you did.
Okay.
All right, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Baker?
Did you ask me?
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Sure, yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Kokonoski?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sherrick?
Yes, and I apologize.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Excellent. We already took care of number six in another motion. So, we are on to number seven, which is the 2014 High School Diploma Signature.
Angel, hang on a second. Was that previous motion for the 19th, or just for the regular board meetings?
It was for all of them.
All, the 19th included?
12, the Detman.
Yeah, absolutely. All right, 2014 High School Diploma Signature. Because we've moved our organizational meeting, we won't have an officer elected as president, these have to be run off and signed before that meeting happens. And so, I offered to do it. It would put me down as the vice president, but I wanted to make sure that was okay with the board before I sign anything. It's signing, physically signing 550 diplomas. If you guys have an idea you'd rather do, I'm okay with it. But otherwise, I, I offered to do it.
I will make a motion that you sign 555 diplomas on behalf of the board.
Do I have to sign my legal name, or can I just go with Angel?
Nobody's going to believe just Angel.
So, but the motion needs to include, include as vice president.
As, as vice president, representing the Board of Education.
Second, okay, roll call vote.
Who's the second?
Chris seconded it.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Kokonoski?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sherrick?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. All right, the next thing we have is meeting dates, times, locations, and future agenda items. I am going to, well, obviously, the board meeting, but I'm wondering if, if everybody's looking at the dates they have that I've put behind things. Are they okay? Everybody, I realize only a couple of them are dated, which is why we just did what we did.
So, are these tentative dates, or are these actual dates?
The ones that are on there are actual dates.
The Technology Professional Development Plan may alter because of incoming information that, that may change. So, it's on for May 12th right now, but that, that may be moved to June the 9th.
Okay. How about either way, we put it on the agenda and can say we need to move it if we need to?
Right.
All right, sounds good. Anybody else? So, what do we have? Lisa, yours is staff morale. Jeff's not here, but I'm sure the next one is fine. And then, we'll assign dates to the others. Then, we're on to C, Future Agenda Items Request by Board Members. Let me expedite the process a little and read to you what I've written down. Okay. Chris Scott asked me about putting information at our spots. She would like that on a future agenda. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Kim, Life Skill Center. I just wrote down things as people talked, so...
Yes, I mean, he said he would bring that forward when we could, but I would still like it on the, the plan.
So, I, I want to make sure I understand. You, you want it as an agenda item before the bids come in?
No, I mean, if you think the bids are going to be within 60 days, this will give...
Well, I'm, we're hoping that the city does its work, so...
Right. But if, if we can get it to step, the next step, because usually, it's about 90 days by the time you actually, I'm hoping you can come well before our days are up, but I would like it put on there someplace.
Good.
Did you also want the Consolidated Task Force on there?
Yeah, but that's number six.
That's important.
I was going to let her go finish her list first before I...
Okay. 2% on TSAs. Did you want that on an agenda?
I think, yeah, I think we need to go over the administrative contracts, yes.
Okay. And then, Kim, tied to that was one-year contracts for new administrative contracts. Did you want that on there to discuss?
Well, could we just not put discussion of administrative contracts?
Absolutely.
Thanks, I'll...
I mean, it just takes the whole...
Okay, your next one was quarterly evaluations. Would you like that on?
You know what, let me think on that one, because I think it'll just be a waste of time.
All right. And then, Consolidated Task Force?
Yes. I, I think that we need to keep bringing that to the board on a regular basis.
Is it all right if we just put it down as an update from the two of you? No?
No, yeah, as an update. I mean, the board shouldn't be taking action on something that is...
No, our members updating us, kind of giving us highlights.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, absolutely.
That's what I mean.
So, are you talking, can I, are you talking about like where the WASB update is?
Yeah, something like that. Is that all right? Is that all right with you, Chris?
It's absolutely fine. And Kim, you're more than welcome to be the spokesperson on that.
You've got a lot more.
You know how I like to talk.
Yes.
Are the, are the Consolidated Task Force meetings posted, just in case more board members...
Yeah, they're on the web.
Thank you. Okay, that was all I had. Sorry if I missed something. Anybody else have anything? Yes.
I just had one, and I don't know the policy number, and I tried to look for it, and I kind of got sidetracked. I would like to go through the policy about cell phone use, student cell phone use. It's a problem up at Spash.
We have, actually, we're going to bring forward at the next meeting, we have collapsed three or four policies into one. It's called the Technology Responsible Use Policy, and it includes social media, cell phone use. It includes the whole range of, of things. It's very long, but it's better than having the three or four that we had, in which there was a lot of overlap. So, we're bringing that forward.
Next meeting?
Next meeting for first reading.
Okay, good, thank you.
And the televising meetings will come next time also.
Yep.
Yeah, if they've got all the information together, yeah.
Okay, and the other thing, our next meeting is the organizational meeting. So, we will elect officers. We will also, I just want to remind everybody, it's also when we set our calendar for the year. So, Trish and Alex, if you have any specific ideas about if you want to go to committees, if you want to meet once a month, if you want to meet twice a month, that sort of thing, that's when you bring those ideas forward, and we talk about it. So, anything you're thinking, bring it.
And it was approved to put that policy on at the beginning of the meeting, correct?
Yes, there was a motion made that it's...
Yes, absolutely, the 141, yep. Anything else?
Don't say it.
Good sir.
All right, then I need a motion to move into closed session, please. Second? Thank you. We need, oh, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I need to state that I would prefer to do this in open session, but know that it can go into closed session. And that needs to be on the record, I believe.
And I would like to make that same statement.
What was the statement, Lisa?